We'll go ahead and get going. Thank you guys for joining us for our September 1st, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, I'll leave you lead everyone here in the room in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Covert is online is going to lead us in invocations, so if you'll stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, free will with liberty and justice for all.
... decisions for our city tonight. Would you lead us in that way, in Jesus' name, amen?
Amen.
Thank you. And with that, I'll call this meeting to order, if we could do a roll call.
Howard Austin. Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James Dated. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
And the August 4th, 2020 minutes, any questions or comments from the Planning Commission? If not, look for a motion and a second to adopt the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. There are a couple of tabled items that we will not hear this evening. The first one is a conditional use. C-20-17 Nicole Burson, 765A Creek Avenue. There's a large scale L-20-25 caliber collision off of Elm Springs Road. That also will not be heard this evening, tabled per staff or per applicant on that one. With that, I'll move to our first section, which is tabled items from last month. First one being L-20-16 Overland Town Houses, formerly Butterfield Coach Senior Apartments, west side of Butterfield Coach Roads, south of Adrian Avenue, presented by Ferdi Fori.
You can take your mask off there if you want to. It's easier to hear.
Yeah, if you pull that mic up a little bit, I'm not sure that we're catching. Yeah.
Chairman, I apologize for the interruption. We are unable to hear him. I don't know if his mic is not on.
Is this mic on?
No.
Yeah, I've got everything on right here.
Okay, try it again.
Nope, not yet.
Hang on a minute, we got technical difficulties. Is it plugged in? I bet you that works better now, see if that works.
Your concern.
They're coming.
Louise is on his way. Okay, we're plugged it in over here.
Okay.
Go ahead. Again, my name's Ferdi Fori, and we've gone back and redesigned this project with...
You need to get closer to the mic.
Hear me, like this?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Like I said, we went back and redesigned it with 25 units and had to reduce the footprint to allow for the green space area. So we feel like we've tried to comply with all the requirements for the large scale. Also the parking, we've added some parking area too. And that's the new building elevation drawing that you'll see over there.
Staff comments?
Basically now we have five buildings. Each building has five units.
Right.
And they are two-story buildings.
Right.
With a single car garage in each building.
Exactly.
That puts the density at seven units per acre. It was rezoned to MF-12. You meet the open space requirements required by the number of bedrooms and to meet the minimum requirements for open space. Okay, so right now, planning has no other comments. There's no variances being asked for multifamily design standards. The engineering comments that are left include you need to revise the drainage management they need 20 feet, show the proposed street light, and you need to submit a grading permit application.
Yes.
And that's the only comments that we have.
Any questions or comments in the audience? If you do, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Laura Joseph, and I'm at 32...
Can you pull that mic down a little bit? I'm sorry, that one's just really hard to hear.
Good, getting right on it.
Yeah.
My name is Laura Joseph, and I live at 3216 Casey Avenue. So I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac that is near to this development. One concern I had for it being double-story is just the privacy aspect with the other houses that are on each side. Another is the traffic flow, and it sounds like you're considering another light to come in and out of that, is that correct?
No, at this location, you're not proposing a traffic signal at this location.
Okay. And then with 25 units, that's going to be at least 25, 50 cars probably in that area. So just the density of how much traffic flow in and out of that one street onto a major street. Originally, we were told it would be senior living, and now that has changed. So I'm wondering about the residents then, what are the plans for who's going to be living in these townhouses?
It is not set up in the zoning ordinance itself. The MF-12 does not specify that it has to be any one certain age group or anything like that. They originally talked about the idea of doing senior living and decided to move on to just standard townhomes. So it's not restricted to 55 and older, but that doesn't mean that there won't be somebody who lives there. It's just not restricted to that. And the ordinance doesn't require it to specify the age or anything like that of who's in those units that are there.
Okay. Is there any requirement, I don't know, in Springdale, just how many cars and vehicles can be in a certain amount of space?
Well, the project is designed, it has to have two paved parking spaces for each unit. And they have provided on their design some places for visitors to park, not along the street itself, because it has to be maintained as the fire exits too. So they added the additional space for people who are visiting. City ordinance doesn't allow for people to park in the yard or anything like that, only in those paved parking areas. They meet the minimum parking requirements by city ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
My name's James Burkett, 3188 Casey Avenue. I myself and others, due to poor lighting of that addition that we live on, on Casey, no streetlights for about two blocks down, there's no streetlights. I've been victim to vandalism, garage doors, two, slicing the tires, four, and you know, just some minor vandalism, climbing the fence, that's hardly noticeable, but will it be well-maintained, well-lit, and well, like, policed?
When some of the other developments that occurred in that area, there was not a requirement for streetlights. They are required to put in lights. It is one ownership with one management company. It's not designed to be divided into lots. What they're proposing is one single development. It'll have an office at the entrance, and they manage the entire property. And they do all the mowing, all that kind of stuff. Everything outside is taken care of by this management company, and that's the proposal we're looking at.
Okay. I just know that certain amount of street is duplexes, and then it seems like when the houses, dwelling places took off to the end of the cul-de-sac, there's no streetlights down through there. And it's very dark in that circle. We have fell victim to like a drug drop-off. They would come from every corners of that area and meet in that cul-de-sac. We got to actually going outside and pretending, filming and that kind of stuff, and it seemed to cease. They did kind of police it a little better after complaints, but nothing was ever done about my vandalism, which was out of pocket, a few hundred dollars, not a whole lot. But I just want to make sure that it's well-lit, privacy fenced and all that. And my neighbor's concern was the overlook. Everything around that two-story development is going to be single dwellings, and you can see down in other people's houses, takes away from our privacy. On the flip side, you can actually look up and see in their windows. I don't know what you had in mind for that, but...
The existing areas could have been two-story. Whoever developed them chose not to build two-story. So that's not uncommon for subdivisions to have mixtures of single-family and two-stories. Those areas were developed prior to the time when the city required streetlights. We don't allow any new developments to go in now without adequate streetlights. And every so often, they have to have one. That doesn't help your situation any, no, but that does keep future things from happening with those dark corners.
Okay.
And we do what's called crime prevention through environmental design to make sure we're not creating dark areas in places where people can hide, based on the way things are designed and developed now.
Okay. In the not-so-far-past, I did speak with a city official, and they said, "Come down and make a complaint about this lighting on our street, and we will see if it was included in their development plans somewhere or another."
Yeah.
Well, but apparently it wasn't the case. But it is very dark down through there, two city blocks or so.
We have had some areas that created some neighborhood watch programs through the police department, been able to have a POA that could help defer the cost of putting in lights in. Usually, it's hard when you go back into a subdivision figuring out where to put them. Everybody wants lights in their subdivision, but don't put it on my lot, and so we've had some concerns with that. You might contact the police department and see about a neighborhood watch program to see if they'd help you get something organized in that location. I know they've done it in other places.
Well, we all kind of look out for each other.
Take care of each other, yeah.
And I have come out 11:30 at night, dogs barking, I have dogs, and I look outside, and there's two individuals between two houses across from me. And then I say, "Hey, what are you doing?" And they take off running, and there's two more this side that just crime, looking for open opportunities. You know, they could take credit cards and all that stuff, but they just go through people's cars. If some kind of garage is open, they'll go through that. In the past, it's not happened recently, but we have had that issue, and I'll close with that.
But is there any other things that we could suggest, other than getting with the police department for neighborhood watch and those kinds of...
I'd say, hey, James, if you have a neighborhood watch, we open up the internet and gather, or if I don't have the streetlights in my neighborhood either, or if like this lives on their own path, you know?
Mine burn constantly. I thought about putting out one by the street, but I don't know restrictions or anything. A lamp post, close to my sidewalk. I know it's in my yard, but I don't know if there's any restrictions.
If you want to come down and we talk about and see where you could put one in, if you want to do something, we might work something out that way. Or you or your neighbors want to go together and put some in individual yards, we can look at that.
I was told in the past that you could pay so much to like SWEPCO or one of the electric companies to help defer the cost and that kind of stuff.
We'd have to go out and go to what, on the flat additions, how much it's, so they got together and, you know, and they placed a view out there.
Okay.
And does the city pick up the cost, the monthly cost for the streetlight?
They pick up the monthly cost for the house.
Yeah. Black House Energy or whatever.
Oh, Black Hills is, yes.
Yeah, the SWEPCO or Ozark out there.
Okay.
So, but anyway, you do...
Just so I can get some information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually, the issues are where we're going to put them.
Okay.
So if you and your neighbors can agree on whose yard you're going to put them in, that easily helps, because sometimes that's a part, there'll have to be an easement for it, for it to be put in that. So those kind of details we could work with if you come down to the office.
I'm kind of a jack-of-all-kind of trades, you might say. If I could run a lamp post 10 feet from my sidewalk, it just lit up my front yard, you know? I've got...
Yeah, you'll want to come and visit with them in there before you do that.
Come visit with us and we'll see if we could help you come through something like that.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, if you'll come to the mic.
Matt Green, 3208 Casey. When they brought this up a month ago, it was 1,092 square foot units, 25 of those, which would probably house comfortably two or three people, senior. But with the proposed revisions of somewhere around 1,500 square foot, that means there could be four to six people living in those units, which premature area, you could have three or four extra cars and a little bit higher noise level. With that area sandwiched and bedded up against the Yorkshire side, there's a lot of, if they have children, it's going to be a lot of open area that's not wanting to be fenced per building for those childrens to stroll that quarter mile from Butterfield Coach Road all the way back to the backline fence against the houses on Mark. And, you know, the traffic safety with those children along that road with them. Also, another concern is the residents at the 1506 Butterfield, I don't think they're here, made an effort to visit with them, but they have a driveway right off of Butterfield Coach Road. And that road that would go in there on that 26-foot wide road would only be about 12 to 15 feet. And that's where the core drillers were there last Thursday, Friday, making their mark to go down and do the core sampling. And I just don't know what kind of relief you need off of a driveway to put a major road in there like that, you know, curbing and whatnot. Last year, they put a privacy fence all along that, their property, and I know I'm not speaking for them, but how would that be handled with tearing that privacy fence down or replacing it with what the developer's going to do, and if there's any pylons or protection all the way down the unit, you know, for speed? You know, our intentions are to have less traffic and density back there and noise, and it seems like there's just going to be more, because we're cramming another probably 100 residents or so into that little nook that's 120-foot, and that's 28-foot less than the boundary of the commons area from north to south, so...
They do meet the minimum requirements for the turning radiuses at the street. They meet the distances from the property line that they're supposed to go. That's set, we have minimum standards, they meet all of that. It's a driveway, it's not really a street. It's not considered to be a public street. It is a private drive into this development, which will be owned and maintained by the developer, not the city. So it's not opening up another city street through there. Any kind of development that goes on that piece of property would provide some additional traffic, because it's a long, narrow lot.
So they have speed bumps, or they impose those in the area for their own private drive?
They could along a private drive if they need, if they wanted to. If it was a public street, they can't, but if they need to control the speed of those people going down that driveway, they can put them on their own driveway. And I don't know that, they've looked at that, and not till they actually get into it, would they discuss whether or not they're putting speed bumps in there. But that kind of thing could happen. What happened?
And one of the neighbors that expressed a concern was at the very end on the Hammerhead, there was only one dumpster down there, but all the five buildings would be disposing into that one large dumpster, and he says, "Man, is that thing going to be banging all night and all day, you know, so the noise level there..." Not knowing, I said, "You need to show up and mention it," and of course I did, but they were concerned about that, and some other folks with safety in their backyard.
Well, again, they meet the minimum requirements for waste disposal, where it's located, has to be screened. I don't know about the time that it would be done, but I would assume that they could make arrangements so it's not done in the middle of the night or at 4 o'clock in the morning or something like that. That's usually what happens, but they make their arrangements for their own trash pickup, as far as that's concerned. So it meets the minimum requirements for that, too.
So, but with the square footage going from 27,300 to 37,5, would they be willing to go to four buildings instead of five, or do they have to stay with the five buildings?
Well, basically, with the way it's rezoned, they can go up to 12 units per acre if they can meet the minimum requirements. They reduced it down to five buildings with five units in each one and still meet the minimum requirements of providing adequate open space and parking spaces and everything that's required. The size of each one of the units is not something that's set by city ordinance, in that you can set what size the actual apartment is, we set the number of units.
Okay.
And so they meet all those minimum requirements as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Jean Green, 3208 Casey. I guess our concern is that the tone of the area is a little on the rough side, and if we add apartments to where we're at, we are likely to have issues. And so when we have these issues, is this the builder's responsibility or the developer's responsibility if, you know, there's graffiti on the fence or vandalism? I mean, it's just, it seems like you're just packing a lot of people into a very small, dense area next to some homes that we've invested in, and it just seems like an out-of-balance situation. And so we're really concerned about the criminal element and just the rundown of the area, just because putting that many people in a small, dense area, most people, you know, it's going to be low-income, basically, kind of.
Well, I don't know that you can necessarily make that assumption that it's going to be low-income just because it's multifamily. It is townhomes that are pretty good size. I would think the rent is going to be pretty substantial. It has a management company that will take care of all that. The assumption that it's going to be low-income is not a fair assumption being made, and just because it's townhomes doesn't necessarily bring a criminal element with it.
Well, I mean, it's just, our side of town has a reputation, and it just doesn't feel like that's going to increase it by cramming more people in. And so what are the privacy fence requirements? You know, are they going to take down that barbed wire and make an attractive fence on both sides?
Yeah, they are screening both sides. They're putting trees as well as privacy fences, as far as that's concerned. And I think the way we change the image of the east side is to put good quality housing projects in there. They're an asset to everyone else, and the standards that we have in place and the project that we have before is, I think, will provide that kind of a quality development, and that's what we're looking for.
So if we have, if concerns do come up, who do we go to? Do we go to the developer, or do we come to the police?
If it's a graffiti issue, I think there is a graffiti hotline that you can call, and, you know, we've been really careful in Springdale to make sure that that gets cleaned up really quickly. The longer it stays, the worse it is. So you call, you know, call Neighborhood Services, you call the mayor's office, you call our office, you call the police department, if you've got those kind of issues. The vandalism issues and that kind of stuff, it's simple, you call the police department regardless.
Okay, I think the one I didn't mention is the parking situation. Like on Casey, I mean, you can't hardly get up and down the street. I think they're not supposed to be in the street, but I bet there's 20 cars every single day parked in the street, so who's to say that's not going to happen there as well? And so, and in the yards, I mean, that's very prevalent on Casey.
Well, one of the things that we asked this developer to do was to create those extra banks of parking so that people who come and visit have a place to park. And they're getting some management.
I think they live there probably, the people are residing that have all the cars.
And it could be, yeah. I mean, we do have an ordinance that says you can't park in the yards on the grass. The street is, or the drive is narrow enough, there's not going to be enough room for people to park on both sides and still be able to get through.
Yeah, it's just really difficult.
Again, that's a management issue.
I mean, it's not enforced on our street, and we turn it in all the time, so I just see more of the same, and it just is a little discouraging to see extra population.
I would tell you the difference that I see in this development here is I've seen developments like this in Florida, for example. I have a good friend that lives in a townhome like this. Manhattan's the exact type of parking pieces that is in here. Those extra spots where there's an insert right in between those buildings is for the extra cars as far as overnight parking, and it worked very, very well. And a development like that was actually right in the middle of other subdivision developments. This is a big development outside of Jacksonville, Florida area. So these are actually really effective developments that come in into these types of locations. Completely understanding your concerns.
Where there's a gated, yeah, more a gated community.
They are not gated.
Because in Florida, the things I've seen are mostly gated.
They are not gated.
Yeah, so that's a difference you see.
Yeah, I'm just giving you an example across the US where there are effective developments like that, and I understand the circumstances as far as the existing neighborhoods and where these are coming in as far as where there's existing still vacant property. Just given that is where it has been very good, effective developments in here.
Yeah. I just know they're budding up to pretty rough-looking duplexes, and I just think people are going to have a hard time at a higher level coming in and going, "Oh, this would be a great place to live." They're going to go, "Oh, look at this horrible neighborhoods around us."
And the developer's taking that risk.
Yeah.
Of building something at a higher quality adjacent to the areas it's going into, trying to raise the property values. They feel like they can make it work.
Yeah, if it works and the rent's high enough, I guess, but I just, it's hard to imagine. So that's why we're concerned, you know?
Change is hard, too, yeah. The other option, there was a zone commercial before, it could have been storage units.
I think I'd have rather had that, honestly, just because of the population density and the way people don't take care of their homes. Or duplexes, or apartments, or townhouses, they just don't care, and they just...
Hey, Patty?
So, anyway.
Go ahead, Peyton.
Is the management going to be onsite?
Yes, they will have onsite manager.
So that's one thing I would say that's different than the surrounding neighborhoods, right? Those are not developments that are owned by one company and managed by one company? And so to me, I feel comfortable with this a little bit more so because you have one owner and an onsite management company, and it's really not in their best interest for that place to look at. So I think, you know, if I was going to counter that, that's the comment that I would make.
Yeah, thanks, Peyton. Any other questions or comments from the audience in here? Yes, if you'll come up to the mic, please.
Hello, my name is Kate, and I'm from 3106 Casey Avenue. And one of my concerns, I have two kids, one of my concerns, how far are those trees and the fence going to be from the property? There was a case in last year, I believe, on Don Tyson, when a woman and a child was injured by the back fence while, that's one of my concerns with COVID. My kids spend a lot of time in the backyard, so one of my concern is how, you know, how much of a distance is it, like if a drunk driver goes in my backyard, like, and hits it?
Okay, you're on, what street are you on?
3106 Casey.
Okay. They are, what's the distance of the street or the drive off of the edge of the property? Ferdi, can you answer that?
If you can give him a chance to step up to the mic, I'm not sure.
I believe we allow about 10 foot there.
Okay. From the edge of the property line, it's 10 foot before you get to the street itself. And what kind of screening are you putting on that side of the project?
So we substantially increased it from what we had before, adding a row of Leland Cypress trees that would create a permanent barrier there with a new six-foot wood fence.
With a six-foot wood fence and the landscaping that's going along there, too. And that will be on their side of the property, not yours. Yeah, okay?
When you say the landscaping, so it's the fence going to be and then the trees, how big are their trees? How many trees will be, like, by each house? Like, let's say, like...
What they're putting is, can you go to the landscaping plan? Do you have that loaded? So you can see all those little circles, that's where they're planting the trees along that side.
Okay.
And what's the spacing between those, Ferdi?
25.
25 feet between trees.
What kind of trees are there, again?
Leland Cypress, they're every...
They're creating that visual barrier and that physical barrier up against the fence, too.
Okay. And also, my fiance is a UPS driver. Well, the UPS... Will the UPS drivers be able to, I know they have like a policy where they don't really like to reverse, will they be dropping off where the guests are, like the maidens are?
Well, there's a turnaround at the, at the west end of that. It's got to be there for fire trucks to turn around. It's got to be there for dump trucks to turn around, anybody else going into that. That's what, you hear a hammerhead, that's that little thing in there where you can back in and be able to turn around or pull in and be able to turn around. And be able to do that for all those kind of facilities.
Mm-hmm. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Louise, is there any questions or comments on the, on the line? No one online? Okay. Okay, I'll turn it to the commission.
This takes a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, the motion by Dr. Compton?
Second.
Is that Mr. David?
Yeah.
Okay. A motion by Dr. Compton, a second by Mr. David.
Austin.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero. We appreciate you guys coming in and great questions that you had. I hope we were able to really help fill you in as far as this, on this development. I think you'll be happy with this, so. All right, next item, L 20-18, 40th Street Commercial, 755 North 40th Street, presented by Bates and Associates.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Jake, I'm representing Bates and Associates. We're proposing a 12,000 square foot commercial building with associated drives, parking and drainage improvements. It was tabled last time because of our variance request that we're no longer seeking. And I'm here for questions if you have any questions.
Staff comments?
Okay. Okay. Basically, we have a redesign and they had asked for commercial design standard variances. And I think they've gone back and done a good job of readdressing that, the percentage of what is, what, what is the material?
I think the owner and the architect are on right now, maybe they can speak more to that, to what the building percentages are.
Yeah, this is Jimmy Smythe, I'm here if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, and I'm the owner. Yeah, so the, I think that the issue on the, when we tabled it last time, we were seeking the variance was primarily the amount of metal that we had on the north side of the building, which we have, for the most part, eliminated about 90% of the metal and replaced it with the fiber cement cladding, faux wood on the north side of the building. So I can run through the percentages with you if you'd like on all sides.
Well, we've got a percentage to hand out. I don't know that everybody online got to see it, but basically on the north side, it is 67% of that fiber cement cladding, which is the faux wood, and 33% is still metal wall panels. And you can see on the drawing, they've made changes to that. The rest of it meets the requirements for not being all metal, oh, I'm sorry, not predominantly metal on the other sides. The standard comments that we have left, the existing trees that are shown to be saved will be evaluated at the time of the C, at the CO to confirm their compliance with perimeter landscaping. You got to make sure we, that you maintain those if you're going to use them as your perimeter landscaping. The ordinance requires that the face that, that abuts the public right of way have a customer entrance or feature. And the west elevation doesn't have that customer feature. You need to provide some kind of an architectural element such as a cantileter, canopy or other feature to emphasize the entrance from the western facade. Engineering comments remaining, you need to submit a grading permit application. You note on this that they did, they are doing underground detention in the parking lot rather than the detention pond they had on the first thing that, that was submitted. They've, they've done a good job of going back and addressing the concerns that we had before, and I think we have a better quality project than what was originally submitted.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Louise, anyone on the phone? To the commission. Any, this is a motion and a second, yep.
A motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Large scale passes nine zero. Thank you guys for going back and reworking those things. I, I agree with Patsy on it, definitely a much better development on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, L 20-21, Butterfield Coach Apartments, east side of Butterfield Coach Road, south side of Robinson Avenue, presented by Balloon Associates.
Yeah, this is George DuCane with Balloon Associates. Since the last time we, we saw this project, we have actually kind of reduced the number of units that we had and we've reduced the parking with a reduction in units that kind of worked out. By doing that, it allowed us to increase green space in the areas indicated. You can kind of see the light shading in there. So as of this point, we are just slightly over the 20% required for open space requirements with, you know, going through all the, the multifamily standards in there. It did require some reconfiguration of lots, but I think we've actually made it work to where it needs to be. I'm here, if you guys have any questions, please let me know and I'll let you guys get to it.
Staff comments?
So this property is owned MF 24 and what they're proposing is 12 units per acre. They, as you said, they reduced the buildings now down to nine buildings with 80 units. The discussion we had about that drainage area being used as open space, it will just be a drainage area as proposed on here and they've been able to still meet the requirements for the open spaces we talked about. There's a little bit of concern about the coloring on the elevations. It's a little bit deceiving as to what color you're actually using based on what we see on these pictures. So we, we need you to submit us some additional information about the colors to be used. The perimeter landscaping on the northwestern property line, you added some trees there in that one corner. When you get to the building the furthest on the east, there's no perimeter landscaping between that building and the property line. Austin, is that the only place we're missing the perimeter?
I think it was mostly the northwest for the screening to the commercial.
Okay, the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. Vegetative screening is being used in lieu of an opaque fence on the northern property line. It will need to comply with, with the following in the northwest corner of the additions to which it is currently shown and the requirements for a semi-opaque screen type, you need to be sure you address that. The lighting, I'm not sure that we have all the information we need for lighting. Is most of the lighting being provided on the building rather than? George, can you answer that, what kind of lighting? Because the building mounted lights are limited to accent lighting and can be used to eliminate the, and used to eliminate architectural features at 20 feet. Not sure we understand all that.
I, I believe that the majority of the lighting is going to be building lighting, but I do believe that we were kind of short on, on certain areas. So we were going to use pole lightings in, in those areas where we weren't quite hitting the foot candles that we needed. Jeff Ramming should be on. He is the architect for the developer, works directly for the developer. He may be able to answer a little bit more of that.
Okay, we just need to make sure that it meets the lighting standard of the entire site. So that still will be a comment before you can get approval is to make sure we meet the lighting requirements. If y'all want to comment on it now, that's fine, or we can just do that with your resubmission. There needs to be, as I said, the specific color specs, so we know what we're talking about. You show an access pedestrian walkway connection to the property to the north, but it just ends there. How does that connect with what's going on into that adjacent property? There doesn't seem to be any coordination between this one and the adjacent property. So I think we're looking for something to be addressed there. The engineering comments that remain. Katie, are you, are you online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You said correct elevations, are we talking about the finished floor elevations?
Yes, there was a typo where it, the plans that I got only pulled in the last two where it said like 50 instead of 1350. So that is just a little typo there that needs to be corrected.
Okay.
The elevations themselves, as long as that is the final that I got, should be fine. I just think it's missing the first two digits.
Okay. You need the required notes.
We did do that on purpose to, for space, just to make sure that we had enough space to put all those on there.
Okay, that's totally fine. I understand.
Okay. Add required notes to the site plan, detention certification is stockpiled, show the direction of the mast arm on the streetlight, submit the grading permit application. And Katie, there was a note that said revised driveway edge should be at least 28 feet from property line. Are you talking about the radius onto the, we weren't sure what that comment meant.
Yes. So since it's the 20 foot, 28 foot radius, it's encroaching on the property to the north. So to get that on, only on their property, it'll need to be 20 foot, 28 foot away from that property line.
Or can they get an easement from the adjacent property owner to allow it to go to that location?
Yes, or they will need the adjacent property owner's permission.
Okay. What are the other?
Yeah, it's fine. I, I do believe that the, the same property owner owns both pieces, so that should be fine.
Okay. And I believe that's all the comments we have.
What were the public features?
The public amenities, you mean? Can you tell us the highlight of your public? You've got a gazebo, right? And?
We have two barbecue pits. We, we took the barbecue pits and we have one in the first cluster of three, and then we have another one in the, in the back, the back area that's kind of visible for, for almost all the buildings in there. And then we added a gazebo that's next that, where it's leveled building nine. So we have a little gazebo there for, for people in that open space.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? You have any questions online? Was there any questions online? Okay. Let's do the commission. There's been a motion and a second.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Mueller.
Second.
I didn't hear who that was.
Roy.
Oh. Second by Mr. Covert.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next tabled item, R 20-31, Gerardo Garcia, 304 West Sunset from C2 to C5, presented by Gerardo Garcia.
Hi, mi nombre es Gerardo Garcia, 304 West Sunset, Sprinter.
Okay. Can you tell us what he's wanting to accomplish on here?
¿Qué es lo que usted quiere lograr ahora con esto? Hacer un drive-through?
He would like to do a drive-through.
You got to speak into that mic.
Okay, he's asking to rezon this piece of property so he can add a drive-through to, the building that's located there. You can't do that in a C2 zone, it has to be upgraded to a C5. Which side of the building are you looking to put the, the drive-through on?
Yes, mhm, yes.
Which side of the building?
¿Cuál lado del edificio? Right.
West side?
¿El oeste?
Yes, west side. Okay. That's the reason for the rezoning is so he can add a drive-through on that location.
So for those on the phone that may not have heard that, a drive-through on the west side.
Right. And he'll have to come back with plans to show how he can still meet the parking requirements and make that drive-through work on that side. Okay. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and track structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community and regional centers.
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? Anyone online? It's to the commission.
It's a call for the vote.
I, I have just, I have just one comment. I don't have any problem with the rezoning, but the thing that makes me nervous about this section of Sunset right here is that there are, there's not defined ingress or egress for any of these buildings. So it's, the street rolls right into the parking lot. And so the thing that makes me nervous about adding a drive-through is you add, you know, you just add another way for vehicles to get in and out of there when there's not, you know, when there's no definition, there's no curb, there's no sidewalks, there's nothing to distinguish where should a car come in and come out, if that makes sense. And I don't know, you know, I don't know if or when we could address that, but that's, that's really my only concern with this whole area right here. If anybody's driven down through there, they know that you have obviously big trucks on the, on the south side there that come and go from the, from the freeze store. But I just, that's the only thing that gives me a little bit of pause right there is that, you know, it's a little bit scary for anybody that's on foot.
Making the modification of this to do the drive-through, he'll have to address the parking issue. And right now you can't bark directly into the street, so we may be able to get some curbs put in there that addresses that when we come up with. I, I have the same concern you do, being able to bring traffic through there and all that. It's, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to get this done.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to note that for the record.
And so that curbing would be the responsibility of the, of who?
If, the developer, if he wants to change it and add a drive-through, because he's changing the flow of the property, the way it operates now, by adding that drive-through as a separate element, so we have to address all of that.
It'd be for his property, right?
Right. It's not going to fix the whole street, but it'll fix this one, one business that's changing to have a drive-through.
I don't, I don't think I have a problem with the drive-through at this facility. I question whether or not we should rezon it to have a drive-through that we're not sure will work. Is it possible that he can do the layout before we vote on the rezoning?
Well, we could ask for it to be tabled and let him come back with that before we address it. It's only, it, the problem is it's already been tabled once. And if we don't hear the rezoning tonight, then we're back to square one unless, Sarah, I'm going to put you on the spot. If the planning commission tables it for more information, do they have to go back Sarah, I'm going to put you on the spot. If the planning commission tables it for more information, do they have to go back and notify if it's the second time?
Patsy, yes, they do. And Patsy, I would just like to say to the commission, I would caution before wanting to look at plans before, looking at plans to make their decision whether or not to rezone. I certainly understand where you're coming from, but I think we're kind of getting in some legally shaking grounds to look at plans first.
Yeah, I'd go on record saying I'd rather just vote on the zoning before, because that's what he's asking for, and then we'll see the plans. Not just me.
He may have to come back and ask for a variance for parking spaces or something in the future to get this done. This is no guarantee it's going to work, but it allows him the opportunity to move forward with spending the money to get it done if the rezon's approved.
That'd be my preference, to go ahead and vote on that, not table it.
So what are the use units that are allowed in the C five that are not restaurants? So what are we opening this up to?
Hold on a second. As long as my iPad doesn't crash, we'll be okay.
I have it up if you...
I got it. I just got to get to the right section. A C five allows for... Usually the biggest change is hotel motel and entertainment facilities, eating places that allow for a drive-through, offices, studios and related services, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lot, temporary buildings, healthcare, flea market, but I think it's...
A church could go in there too, right?
Church, yeah, uh-huh. Whereas in a C two, a church is a conditional use and hotel motel and entertainment facilities are not allowed at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for vote.
I didn't hear who that was on there. Oh, sorry. Call for the vote by Mr. David.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Uh, rezoning passes seven, two.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to the city council on September the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item is waiver twenty dash eleven, Steve Patton, twenty seventy-five Long Street, waiver of streets requirements presented by Steve Patton. Do we have Steve on the line? No? Okay. We will move on. I'll come back to that one towards the end. Next section, conditional use. We have conditional use, C twenty dash sixteen, Greg Brown. One point six eight acres between Casey and Dollar General on Highway two sixty-five, use unit fifty-two food truck in a C two district, presented by Greg Brown.
Oh, he's here. I saw him.
I saw him earlier.
Yeah, he's here. I think Rick went to get him.
Those on the line, just give us a minute.
Here they come.
Yeah, we're ready for you guys on here, okay? And if you can state your name for the record and...
Take your mask off if you want to.
Thank you.
These are to understand.
So my name is Greg Brown, P O Box eight six six nine, Fayetteville, Arkansas, seven two seven zero three. And I have with me Jim Key, the architect for this project. I'd like for him to present, if that's okay.
As you can see from our application, we're...
If you can pull that mic up a little bit, sorry.
Yes, my name is James Key with Key Architecture. And you can see from our application, we're seeking both a conditional use and a variance both for a food truck court on this one point six eight parcel of property located between Casey's general store and the Dollar General there on two sixty-five. We are proposing to come in here and improve this with hard surface paving and parking for vendors and users as well as fire access lane around the food truck itself, the food trucks themselves. We understand the requirements for providing an onsite manager. We're showing a small office as well as bathroom facilities and storage facilities for the vendors. And we would ask your consideration at this time for a conditional use approval. Realizing as well that later on on the agenda, there's a variance for the two hundred foot separation requirement between such a development and a food truck court or residential property. We would ask consideration for that variance as well. It's our hope upon approval of this to enlist the services of civil engineers and proceed with development of large-scale development plans for submittal for this facility to the city of Springdale. Realizing as well, we would have to comply with commercial design standards for such a commercial development, and that is our intent. We're looking at about a little over five thousand square foot of boardwalk that we would be putting in as one of the primary features of this facility that all the citizens that have come here to eat and participate in the use of this food truck and these vendors would access the serving windows from this boardwalk along with about a thirty-three hundred square foot maximum covered pavilion and awning area that would provide for some partial covered dining as well as an open lawn area for family activities that may include such things as, you know, shuffleboard or bag throw or horseshoes and that type of thing. It's our hope to provide a environment that would be geared towards a family food court as opposed to just transient workers coming in once a day to eat lunch and that type of thing. We're hoping to have a very viable project here with ten full-time vendors. And would also like to consider exceptions to allow for some special events throughout the year so we could do holiday crafts festivals, special events with some additional vendors during fall and spring crafts festival season during the rodeo of the Ozarks and those types of things. Possibly even considering farm's table market to supplement the farmer's market if there was such a demand by the users of this food truck court. If there's anything that we could share with you or any questions, we'd be glad to entertain.
Yeah, so I'll ask for staff comments on this and right after we do this one, I mean, depending on how we, I'll come back to the variance piece and that way we can handle both together.
Do it all at the same time, yeah.
Staff comments?
This is a conditional use. We're not rezoning the property. It's already zoned C two. It will have some kind of commercial use, but this is a conditional use for a food truck court at this location. The ingress and egress to the property and the proposed structures is acceptable. The off-street parking and loading areas is acceptable. The refuge and service areas, the requirements of the food truck court requires that they provide that service. It's not specifically shown on this, but when we get to a site plan, we'll see how that's going to work. The utilities would be acceptable. There are requirements for all of those. The screening is acceptable. You will be putting in, there is a privacy fence on the east side already, and you will be doing landscaping to complement that privacy fence that's already there.
That was our intent. There is a current six or eight foot privacy fence all along the east side that existed for some time between all of the residential as well as Dollar General and the Casey's. It would be our intent to leave that six foot fence and not replace it with an eight foot fence, but to supplement it with additional landscape screening, planting.
Trees?
Trees.
Okay.
Arbevida and that type of thing provides some additional screening to the current wood fence.
You'd still have your requirement as far as the...
Yeah, the screening fences is required, yeah, right.
And it's our hope to actually open up a portion of this fence to allow for easier access for the residents to our east.
But not for vehicular traffic?
Not for vehicular traffic, just for pedestrian access. We would still provide a screen so it's continual, but it would be offset so pedestrians could get through it. It's our hope that this would be a draw to the neighborhood and not just to other citizens within the entire city of Springdale. And we think that indeed it will be. And it is our intent to landscape it up to commercial design standard with a plant or with shrubs and a tree for every twenty-five or so lineal feet of frontage as well as perimeter screening. It's also our intent to look at some bioswales to handle some of the runoff from all the paved parking and where the food trucks are to try to filter out some of the contaminants and petroleums and gravel and things from that paving.
Okay. Signage will require on the site plan in conformance with the food truck ordinance. The yard requirements and other space requirements are acceptable. The size and shape of the site is acceptable. The proposed landscaping is acceptable. It's acceptable with the following conditions, in that a large-scale development plan will have to be submitted and approved and all of the issues addressed in chapter one thirty, article six, section three point one eight. And I just want to highlight a few of those that we, because I know there's some questions about how this works, to make sure they understand these things have to be provided. The food truck courts are to be located on a collector's street or above as identified on the master street plan. Two sixty-five is an arterial street, so it meets that requirement. They have to be, have frontage on two rights of way or have the width sufficient to accommodate two driveways. And so they have to meet that minimum requirement. It is supposed to be located at least two hundred feet from any single-family residential use. They're asking a variance for that. There can be no more than ten individual food trucks permitted on this court site. The structures associated with the food truck have to be permanent and they have to be located in the required setbacks and the buffer areas which they would address with a non-large scale. They can't imp traffic or visually impair any motor vehicle operation within a parking lot or drive or street. They have to have a minimum twenty-foot wide fire apparatus access route around the perimeter of the food court. The food trucks have to be placed on approved asphalt or concrete surface. In no case shall there be any parked on unimproved surfaces. They have to provide parking at the rate of one parking space per seventy-five square feet of food court seating area with a minimum of twelve parking spaces. There are health and sanitation requirements. There are parking requirements. Their hours of operation would be limited to eight AM and ten PM Sunday through Thursday and from eight to eleven on Fridays and Saturdays. They have to meet the noise ordinance and there can't be any loud noises or music or any other devices between the hours of ten PM and seven AM that would disturb the quiet or comfort of persons within fifty feet. They have to have an onsite manager. The designated manager representative must be physically present at the court at all times when the food truck court is open. They have to have permanent restrooms provided within the boundary of the food truck court. The trucks can be connected to the public water system or can be self-contained. They have to have approval from the Department of Health, and if they wish to connect to the city services for water, there are specifications on how that has to take place. Wastewater, in the same manner, they can be connected to the public sewer or have self-contained units. And there again, they have to meet health department requirements and those connections have to meet city standards. They have to have electrical requirement. All of them have to have electric. They can't operate on a generator unless it's in an emergency situation because the power's out or something, but they can't permanently be on a generator. They can't use extension cords run across there to be able to provide the electrical service. They have to have kitchen hoods that protect for fire and which produce grease or laden vapors shall be provided kitchen hood with ventilation. They can't use Coleman stoves or the equipment or equivalent are not allowed. They have to have white water that's installed. If they use LPG cylinders, there are requirements of how they can be installed. They have to have fire extinguishers to meet safety requirements. They have to have a written waste management plan indicating how the waste is to be handled, how sanitation, litter collection, recycling and daily cleanup procedures shall be required. All of those are specified. The signs that are allowed is one sign on the identifying the food truck court, and each truck may have one sign. They can have sandwich boards in front of their trucks with menus. That's a possibility. The performance standards that we're looking for in this food truck is that the visual and structural integrity of the food trucks must be maintained continuously. All items related to the operation of the food truck shall be kept on or in the unit. No such items shall be stored or placed upon any public space adjacent to the site. No items related to the operation of the food truck court or unit can, shall be leaned against or hung from any building or any other structure, including but not limited to lampposts, mailboxes, traffic control boxes, fire hydrants, tree boxes, benches, bushes, grounds utilized by the food truck court shall be at all times maintained in a clean and attractive condition. All materials generated from a food truck that are to be disposed of should be disposed of properly. It's illegal to discharge or dispose of any substance, material, food or waste into the storm drain system. We're encouraging food trucks to source local products when available. The property must maintain all commercial zoning requirements. All food trucks shall be located on an impermeable surface such as concrete or rolled asphalt. They are to maintain, if the food trucks to remain on the property overnight, they shall have connections for electricity, pump of water. The permit is issued to the food truck operation and they are responsible for each of the individual trucks that come in and out. Copy of that permit has to be visible at all times. And there are site plan requirements that will have to be submitted with a large-scale development. And I go through all that to let you know that we were very serious about when we created the idea of a food truck court, that we would have a quality operation of this. And they understand those standards, and even though the drawings they submit today may not address all those, that will come with a large scale as it's submitted. I think it's fair to say that you don't want to spend that kind of money bringing in all the design people till you know you're going to get the conditional use.
And that's exactly why we're here with these preliminary conceptual plans. If it did not require a conditional use, a variance at the front end of the process, we would have already enlisted the engineers. But we wanted to make sure this was the right site, that it was agreeable to the city before we engaged the engineers and spent that kind of money to develop the engineering plans that are needed. We are familiar with all the requirements for this, the hard surface paving, the waste management, the sanitary requirements. Mr. Brown's already met with Rick Culverini with the city water department and discussed the aspects of water and sewer service. And we're going to work closely with them and with Patsy and the staff in engineering and planning to provide a quality facility that the city will be proud of. Mr. Brown's looking at investing up to a million dollars or more in this development. It's no small undertaking. To do it right and the way you want it done, it involves a bit of expense. And the monthly operation costs are not going to be inexpensive either with an onsite management and an office and restroom facilities that are all going to be provided. We would like to make this very viable. And for that reason, as I mentioned in my initial comments, we would like approval for additional special event vendors that we could bring in perhaps on a twice-a-month basis.
Yeah, that was going to be the comment that I had as far as, I mean, we probably just need to stick to what is here.
Stick to the conditional use and get that addressed first, and then I would suggest you come back with the large-scale analysis for those.
I wasn't sure what was appropriate, but that's very understandable.
Well, and then what you were getting ready to comment on, because you stated it earlier. I mean, this is a food truck court, and so there, how Patsy went through all of those, that is what is acceptable in those locations under conditional use. Additional special events, you mentioned as far as having vendors as far as craft fairs and things like that. You're going to run into a lot of opportunities probably with that, especially with parking and, you know, number of spaces on there. So I would just stick to this.
That's very fine. I do know that the ordinance for food truck courts do mention approval for special use. We just like consideration for that. At the time, a large scale is fine. I realize that this conditional use, while it may be continual with this property and his use after he develops this, the conditional use allows the city to come back and revisit this on a complaint-driven basis.
Very clear of that, but just...
We totally understand that.
I recommend you stick to this on here, okay?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments in the audience?
Before we start that, we do have some emails that were received. I think you all got copies of those. I can read all of them if you want me to, or if y'all will just stipulate those.
Yeah, just if anyone hasn't had a chance, there were five different that were sent in on this. Is there anyone that has not had a chance to read through those from the planning commission?
Let me just say who they were from so that we know. They were one from Ray Arnold, Becky Russell, Stephanie Lung, and Sherry Resler. And Ron and Liz Ware.
And so all of those will go in the minutes for the meeting on here?
The emails as received will just be included in the record, so that those comments are all in there.
So no one from the planning commission didn't have a chance to read this on it? Okay. Anyone else on the phone that might have any comments? Okay.
Anybody in there? Did you ask?
Yeah, I already did on that one. Yeah, any questions or comments from in the room? Okay, it's to the commission. It's to be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, but Mrs. Mueller?
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Presley? Parsley?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Okay, staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the twenty-second. Okay, now the issue that's left is the...
Variance. We have B twenty dash forty-three, Greg Brown, one point six eight acres between Casey's and Dollar General on Highway two sixty-five, variance for deviation of two hundred feet separation from a residential district presented by Greg Brown.
The issue with this is, what's the distance from the property line to the edge of this now?
The property line actually fronts on the public street directly adjacent to this property between us and the residential. From the food trucks themselves to the closest residence is probably over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five feet. However, the properties are separated by a right-of-way width for that street, which is probably in the neighborhood of fifty-five to sixty-five feet. And I know the ordinance does state from property line to property line.
So basically, there is a street that is between... So basically, there is a street that is between this piece of property and any residence to their front yards, and you'll remember when this subdivision was plotted, maybe most of you weren't here then, but some of us have been here a really long time, it was plotted with those commercial lots fronting on to 265. There's always been some kind of commercial activity that's been anticipated for in front of those lots.
So my question on here is, it's just asking for a variance of the deviation of 200. I mean, is there a different deviation that we're looking for?
Well, it's not going to be 200 feet from the property line of the residential to the property line of this because the property lines meet in the middle of the street, because that's the way it was plotted.
So the, I just want to make, so the property line's in the middle of Belinda?
Yes. That's the way those lots were, and the right-of-way was dedicated on each side of those pieces of property when the street was built. But the property line actually goes to the center of the street. But the separation is the 50-foot width of the right-of-way plus the 30 feet of the front yards to the house itself. And then how far are the food trucks set off from the back property line?
Pardon me?
How far will the food trucks themselves act? Well, there's a 20-foot fire access drive, and then there's the 10-foot landscaping area, so you're at least 30 feet.
Yeah, we're looking probably, there's a 24-foot drive, which we're showing more than a 20-foot fire lane. And there's an additional 19-foot parking space and an additional buffer of about 12 to 15 feet of landscaping, so we're at least 60 feet, if not more, from the food truck to our property line.
And then you're another 25 feet to the edge of the right-of-way and another foot, 30 feet to the front of the houses.
Correct. And of course, the thought being that this is going to be much less than the proximity of the commercial developments that are both to our north and south are to that residential property.
Because you have that drive behind it.
We also are not going to have a large-lit canopy that's illuminated 24/7 as the fueling island at the convenience store. So I realize they don't have the stipulations of the 200-foot separation, but we feel like the food truck court with the way we've proposed it and the landscape screening, that we will be a good neighbor, even considering the residential adjacencies, we would ask for consideration of this variance to allow us to proceed with a large-scale development in conjunction with the conditional use.
I guess my question is, is, I mean, this just is open, asking for basically an open variance in here, I mean.
Well, I mean, we could.
Do we have something more defined, less than 200, is what I guess my question is?
Okay.
And should we be doing that?
Can you come up with what the distance is?
Well, my further question is, do we need to actually hear this tonight, or is that something that should be based off of how the large scale comes out?
The site, kind of associated with the site plan?
Yes.
We'll have the actual distance when we get the site plan. I think you're looking to see if it's possible to do that, because if you can't get that 200 feet, then we're at a totally different situation.
Well, I don't think there's any possibility of us getting 200 feet between the food trucks and the residences. I mean, we'll be close to that. There's no way to get 200 feet between our property lines, which is the way the ordinance is written. I think we can come close to the separation between our actual vendors and the actual residences. Part of that depends on their setbacks, but I think we will definitely be over 150 feet between structures, and upon development of that large-scale plan, we will know definitively what that distance is.
What I struggle with voting with on here is not having a defined variance to this.
This is Sarah. I'm actually with Kevin on this. I would just agree legally, if we can have a defined number on that, that would be easier.
Okay, can you just ask for a number, and then if we can't meet it with the large scale, you'll have to come back and ask for a revised variance? Can you give us a number tonight, Jim, of what?
And that's going to be between property line and property line, or how is that?
Well, the ordinance says each court shall be located at least 200 feet from any single-family residential use or single-family zoning district, a measured from the food truck location to the nearest residential use, except for those areas covered by the downtown form-based code.
So that I would hear, I'm hearing food truck, so from the food truck to the residential property line?
To the residence. It doesn't say the property line. This doesn't say property line.
Okay.
In areas covered by the downtown form-based code, a food truck shall be located 20 feet from the property line, but in, it's not in the form-based code area. It is measured from the food truck location to the nearest residential use, except for those areas covered by the form-based code.
It's measured from the large scale itself, not necessarily the food truck?
Well, it says from the.
Because you could have an overhang.
Yeah, you could.
Item number six right below that says the 200-foot minimum distance shall be measured from property line to property line.
Okay, you're right.
So even though we're talking.
We've got a conflict. We've got a conflict in what we got going on here.
Yeah, we really do, and I think truthfully, it's going to be difficult to meet that 200-foot separation of property line to property line unless we're in an industrial or a large commercial central core area where there's not any residential even close to us. We would be glad to provide for.
Pick a number.
160 feet between.
Okay, so you want to reduce from 200 feet to 160?
Yeah.
Okay? And that gives you a place to start with. Okay? So we don't have an open end?
Mr. Brown just asked me, do I think that that's achievable the way we've got this laid out? I mean, we obviously would like to provide as much green space at the front. We've actually provided a lot larger and deeper green space than what's required by city standards and pushed this back some to give more of a buffer along 265. I think we can definitely meet that 160-foot requirement. My concern would be.
Well, when you come back with your large scale, if you can't meet the 160 feet, you can apply for another variance and adjust it to whatever it comes out at that time. I think it, the question tonight is, can you live with reducing that 200 feet down to 160 feet to start with? Calculating.
And the question.
I would feel more comfortable with 150. I don't know what the setbacks are on those structures. I'm assuming they're around 30 feet.
Could be.
Based on my calculation, I think we're 118 feet to our structure, to our property line, or pardon me, about 63 to 65 feet. It depends on if the street right-of-way back there is 55 feet. If it is, we're about 118 feet to the front of their residential property. If a 30-foot setback, we're at 148. So the way we've got it shown, I think, can work. We can pull this forward.
Okay, so if we reduce it down from a 200-foot to 150?
To 150 would be.
Your variance, you are meaning to add that dimension from 200?
We're agreeable to that.
250, okay?
So 150, now I thought we said right underneath it said 200 from property line to property line.
It does say for property line. He's taking from the center of the street.
Okay.
Yeah.
To his property line.
From his property line at the center of the street, 150 feet to the food truck court.
No, we were talking from structure to structure, from residential structure to food truck structure.
Okay, so you're going to have to come back and ask for a variance for this property line to property line anyway.
And at the time of large scale, would be the appropriate time to do that, if you'll consider it. We obviously are going to incur a bit of engineering between now and the point we come forward with a large-scale development. We just like to make sure that that 200-foot variance is not a no deal, because if it is, there's no sense in us to move forward and incur the expense of engineering to try to get a large-scale development approved. We're committed, and we'll be glad to try to provide as much clearance as we can.
Yeah, I mean, just my, I want to hear what we're supposed, I agree, I think we need to understand what we're voting on. I certainly believe that this is in the best interest of Springdale to see what we can come up with, but I just need to understand exactly, I mean, what is it, so 150, are we?
He's talking about 150 feet between the food truck and the house.
And the house.
Not the property line itself. So he will be coming back and ask for a variance to not be from property to property line to property line, but be from that.
So what we're saying tonight, variance for deviation of 150 feet separation from residential district?
Yes.
And we can, we can do that. We can ignore the property line to property line and give a different variance? And that's what it sounds like we're being asked to do.
Trying to do, yeah. I guess the question comes back to you, are you willing to table this and submit it with your large scale and move forward with it? I think you're hearing enough support for it.
Table the variance.
Table the variance itself and bring it back with the large scale, so we actually know what the dimensions we're really talking about.
Do you mind if I?
If you're willing to take that risk.
I think we're willing to take that risk, as long as everybody's comfortable with what we're doing. And by the way, I just want to point out that the Dollar General is not showing on this plaque right now, but you can see from the back of the Casey's to the residential and the back of the Dollar General that's not existing there to the residential is far less than 200 feet. So we're going to be even closer to the street than those two structures, so there will be more space from our, the back of our food trucks to the homes. It's just we're back to the 200.
And I know when we put this together, I think the situation where we would have property lines going to the center of the street is not something we ever thought was going to happen. And naturally, when you write something, the first time you use it, you've got a problem. So that's how that works. I learned that a long time ago.
May I, I think you've heard as far as, from a unanimous vote, as far as the conditional use itself in that whole piece.
Are you going to ask to table this and we'll bring it back with the large?
We're very fine with table on the variance and bringing it back before you with a large-scale development. I do think, as you all know how that lays out, this is a graphic we downloaded showing the Dollar General and the Casey's building. The point that Mr. Brown said is that where we might be 150, 160 feet from structure to our food trucks, the houses to the back of these stores is probably closer to 100. We're going to be further away than they are. I think that's a good argument for us and our variance solicitation along with our large scale, and we'd be glad to come back and present.
And we can, we can word the variance, so we're covering both of those items and.
Appropriately.
Yes.
And obviously, we won't be coming back with a large-scale submittal until after the 22nd, when we go before the council with the conditional use.
Yeah, well, the conditional use will be, you still have to meet those requirements, and you either have to put it on the plan itself, or you have to have the variance approved with the large scale. So you still move forward, we're not keeping you from moving forward because the conditional use has already been recommended for approval.
Are we tabling this to next month, or it sounds like probably two months?
No, we're tabling this until the large scale is submitted.
Okay, just want to make sure that that's understood.
That's agreeable.
Okay.
We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, guys.
We're excited about this. Mr. Brown's been looking at this for some time. We've been touring food truck courts throughout the four-state region and even further. I think there's a great opportunity here. I guess we're excited, for one, that this ordinance has been in place for over a year and a half, and no one's beat us to the market, so we're excited to move forward.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you, guys.
Patsy, am I correct, though? I mean, either way, we've got to correct that, because those number four and number six contradict each other.
I think so. I think we need to address that, too. I will go back and look at that and put it on a piece of paper and see how it works. We'll see how that works, yeah.
I have noted that on your food vending ordinance for just vending trucks themselves, there's only 100-foot separation requirement for the vending trucks versus the truck vending court.
Well, I have to go back and figure out where that 200 feet came from. I don't know that I can tell you tonight, but I have lots of notes on things. I'll see if I can figure out where that came from.
I'm sure if you try and draw it out, it'll be interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's easy to write regulations. I can write those all day long. I don't know, always do they work well, you know?
All right, back to the conditional use section. We have C 20-18, Bryce Curry, 853 71 Plaza Court, Use Unit 41, automobile sales in a C-2 district presented by Bryce Curry.
I don't know what the rules are, so.
Yeah, if you can just state your name for the record and just, you know, some brief comments of what you're putting before us.
The, what I'm putting in front of y'all is the location that used to be a car wash. I guess y'all know from a long time ago that belonged to Joe Edwards, now is Greg Edwards. On the map that's there, the building that's right in back of it is where I am located right now. You see my buses parked there. At the present time right now, because of COVID, that particular spot that I have, I'd like to keep it. I like it. I just can't afford it any longer. So Greg has worked out a deal with me to move up to the front where we can basically have some used car sales. That was zoned before for used cars. I have used cars back there where I'm at, but that's been a long time ago, so we're just going to basically take the location that we have right now, move it up to the front, clean it up, make it look nicer, and put our facilities that are back there at the back right now behind us up to the front. That's pretty much what we're doing.
Great, thank you. Staff comments?
Ingress and ingress is acceptable. The off-street parking is acceptable. The refuse is acceptable. Utilities, screening is not required. I'm assuming you're going to use the existing sign that's out there. You're not putting up any new signs, because nothing was shown on the point.
No, those signs are so nasty, they just need to be redone. I'm not saying redone. I mean, their plates are looked bad, they need to have new plastic put into it.
Yeah, but you're not changing the size or the location or anything like that.
No, ma'am.
Yard requirements are acceptable. There's some landscaping already there. It is generally acceptable with the following conditions, that sale of vehicles be limited to the five-vehicle spaces that you have shown on the drawing that you submitted. And at no time can you have more than five cars for sale at the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it?
Yep.
All right, any questions or comments from the audience? Anyone online with any questions? Okay, we have one caller? No? Okay. It's to the commission. This will be a call for the vote.
Just a quick question, if you don't mind, Chairman. In the back of the building, there's clearly more than five vehicles. Where will they and the buses be while this transition once moved to the front? Where will they go?
Right now, Greg has no problem with those buses being back there. Those buses that you see there right now that are in that particular photo have been sold. They're, they don't exist anymore. There are a couple of newer ones that are back there, not as big as those particular ones. I have talked with ORT, and ORT has no problem with us moving the buses to Ozark Regional Transit onto their property, so they're locked up. I would doubt that I'm probably going to be using those buses anymore right now as it stands. Those buses were for the University of Arkansas. They have been tabled since March 11th. We have not used them at all. University just said that they would probably not be using them for the football games because they don't think that there's going to be transportation or football games. So we have basically lost about a whole year of business. But they would, they can be moved, or they're going to be sold.
So they're not going to be stored on sites, what you're saying?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Yes, Dr. Com.
With all respect to Mr. Curry, it's just very difficult for me to vote to approve more used cars up on Highway 71, so with respect to you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? If not, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. David.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Conditional use passes eight one.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 22nd.
And does he need to be here for that as far as the?
We encourage you to be there. I'll make the presentation to council with the planning commission's recommendation, in case somebody has a question that I can't answer.
Yeah, so these, these go, so we're hearing it here, but it also has to go in front of city council. And that city council meeting is on September the 22nd.
Okay. So, we can do nothing with this particular location at this particular time? Is that what you're telling me right now?
Until that's approved by city council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. Just making sure you understood as far as the next steps on that.
Well, I wanted to make sure I did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
Okay. Thank you.
Next conditional use, C-20-19 Scout Enterprises LLC, 2.1 acres located behind south of 9487 East Brown Road, parcel 21-00167-007. Tandem lot split presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We're here requesting a tandem lot conditional use.
Hang on just a second. Thank you. That was all right. Go ahead.
It's, uh, we're, we're here requesting a conditional use for a tandem lot split, or, I'm sorry, for a conditional use for a tandem lot that, on this East Brown piece of property. We're going to put a, a single-family residence on the property to the south of the highlighted lot. And we're proposing access along the western portion of that lot that's highlighted there.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure I understand because your conditional use application says that the tandem lot was already created by the highway department's right-of-way acquisition for 612?
Correct.
Okay. So, the triangular or the odd-shaped piece that's south of the, where, that's highlighted, that's the, the original tandem lot that was created by the highway department?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. How did it have access? This is the part that's confusing because I don't, the highway department doesn't normally leave landlocked pieces of property. So, is there an access easement across some property? Because now Scott, Scout Enterprises own both of those? Did they own both of those when the highway department split it?
No. They did not. So, we've acquired that since the purchase, or since the acquisition from the...
So, how did you acquire that piece to the south of it? Was it joined together? You bought it in two tracks or one?
If you can state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Kami Scott with Scout Enterprises. And this was a part of an estate case. And so, when this case was settled, this was a part of it. The lots were already split in this fashion. And so, we'd like to put a house on the back lot back there and...
I, I understand that. I just don't understand, are we, are we creating a second access easement because there's one already in existence that was done when the highway department split it? Or the estate was settled? Otherwise, you have a landlocked piece of property.
There is a landlocked piece of property.
And the highway department created that?
And the highway department created it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sarah, do we need to, does that make a difference? I, I'm confused because that doesn't normally happen.
This is Sarah. Um, it, it could depend. I would really like to see some documentation as of, I take her at her word, but it would be really helpful for me to see what exactly it is the highway department did because I don't know if we're running into any issues, if the state already did something, and what we have the authority to do.
I, I don't know what documentation I have, other than the, the court documents where we were able to purchase it. And, I mean, we've got the stuff from the title company. I'm not certain because it was already split. It was already in this way.
Okay. It, it's just real confusing. So, where do you want to put the access easement to this newly created tandem lot, which is that triangular piece that comes up next to the highway department right-of-way? Where's the access easement going to be?
So, what we'd like to do is we'd like to come in off of East Brown Road and go right along that western side there to come back to it. But you can come in there, or you could actually come in on 9553. Perhaps I misunderstood, you know, we were just trying to do what, what my understanding was from you on this. And if we did, I, I certainly apologize for that. We, we'd like to put a house back there and like to figure out how to do that.
And I didn't realize when you and I talked about that the highway department had created a landlocked piece of property, and that really threw me for a loop.
Yes.
And then you're also asking for a variance to not pave it?
Yes. That, that is correct. That distance down through there, so if you look at the houses that are around there, those are all thousand-square-foot houses approximately. Your heated and cooled areas are about a thousand square foot on them. And so, the distance from East Brown back to that is a little over 200 feet. And so, to pave that, the estimates would be 15,000 to $20,000. And so, you're talking about putting a $100,000 house back there and then paying, you know, 15,000 or $20,000 for paving. And so, it just didn't seem to, to match up with that.
Well, the, the size of the house or the cost of the house has nothing to do with whether or not the access drive is paved.
Okay.
I mean, that's to provide access to it for emergency services if you need a, a policeman, you know, a police or ambulance or a fire truck back through there. The size of the houses is, is not an issue. So, okay. Sarah, do we have a problem moving forward with this without documentation from the highway department? If we just clear it up and say, if we approve the conditional use for the tandem lot, then it, it is what it is now? Sarah? Uh-oh, did we lose her?
My, my other question is, is that I believe there's about 200-foot of road frontage there. It's zone A1. And so, if we rezone, you know, you tell me the best course of action to take on it.
Well, the, the paved access on the tandem lot has nothing to do with what the road itself looks like.
Sure.
It's you're creating that access to a second lot because you're putting one lot behind another, and that's not standardly what we allow to happen. So, Sarah, are you, did we lose her?
She, she's not on.
She's not on?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I, I think we can move forward with, with this conditional use application. We just have to work out the logistics of if there is a conflict with what the highway department has created. And my only issue is, is there an access easement already there that's already been granted or not?
To my knowledge, the answer is no.
Okay.
But I'm happy to go back to the title company and ask again, but to my knowledge, the, the answer is no because we ask about the easements ahead of time.
And they didn't show any of that?
The only easement that is on there is for the, the water district, and that's on that back side.
And they, they acquired that after the highway department acquired the right-of-way, right?
Yes. And before we purchased it.
Okay. Okay. I, so I think we can move forward with the conditional use and then the, the various request is, is a separate issue, but we can hear them both at the same time, so. And you have a septic system approval, that you can give a septic system on that lot?
We haven't moved forward with anything on that as of yet. However, we've been working with other. I just worked on a septic system approval and just had digging done and had everything done over at 9553.
Okay.
Which is the other lot. It's a horseshoe-type pattern there. So, we just had it done there. I, I just didn't do it because we hadn't moved forward with this yet.
Okay. So, we would have to know that the size of the lot you're creating for the conditional use is large enough to handle a septic system. And how many acres is it?
It is...
Well, we're not creating a lot. It's already created, right? And so, we're, we're not creating a lot. So, I mean, obviously, if it doesn't perk, we, we can't get a septic system on there. Then we can't, we'll have to adjust and do something different. But, I mean, right now, we were just trying to get the access through the, the track that has, has frontage on Brown.
Okay.
And it's 2.1 acres.
Okay. So, that more than likely is, is enough. But it's just a weird situation with the right-of-way taking, being taken through there. I'm finished. That's all the confusion I can give you.
I agree. That's why we came to you and said, what do we do next?
I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's a kind of a strange situation.
Did Sarah rejoin? Okay. So...
Yes, I'm sorry. My computer got disconnected.
Okay. Sarah, do you have a problem with us moving forward with consideration of this tandem lot split with the access easement where they're proposing? And then if, we'll research and see what we can find with the highway department, see if there's any conflict? Do you have any problem with that?
I have no objection to that, Patsy.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. It's to the commission.
The call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Call for vote by Dr. Compton.
I just, about the driveway, what was decided about, I heard, I thought I just heard something about not paving the driveway.
Well, that comes up next.
I'm still going to hear that. I still have a variance piece that we have to go to.
Okay. So, that's it. Okay.
This is just allowing it to be split, and then you have to take care of that as a separate item.
Once we, depending on how this is, I'll hear the variance next on this. Okay.
Okay. So, we've got a call for the vote. Yes.
Yep. Go ahead.
Dr. Compton, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Recuse?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Eight yes, one recuse. This conditional use passes.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the variance, B-20-46 Scout Enterprises LLC, 2.1 acres located behind south of 9487 East Brown Road, parcel 21-00167-007. Variance for deviation of paved driveway requirement presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple again with ESI. You know, I, I think the special condition is, you know, obviously, there, there's a money aspect, a cost aspect of paving that, but it was a situation that was created, you know, out of our control. And so, we're just asking for that variance to provide a non-paved surface, potentially all-weather, chip-and-seal type surface instead of just full paved asphalt into that, for that driveway.
But you're arguing it was already, already created as a tandem lot?
Well, we still got to get access back there.
Well, I know.
And if it wasn't, if it had, if it was, if it had frontage, we could put a gravel driveway in there.
But if the two lots were still connected, because it's the same property owner, you wouldn't have to have it a tandem lot. But you want to split it off separately, so...
No, it's already split. It's already split. So, we could combine them, right? And have that, and then we could have it, we could do it that way.
I, I need to ask Ed, what kind of access is the fire department going to have? What kind of surface does it have to have?
Blake's online.
He should be.
Who's online?
Blake.
Blake's online? Blake?
He got the link anyway.
Blake?
Blake?
Far away.
Yes.
Oh, there's Blake.
Okay. This, if, what surface will this driveway for this tandem lot have to have to meet fire code?
To meet fire code, it has to be all-weather maintained.
Okay.
Supports 75,000 pounds.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, you're, you want to be able to put gravel that meets those conditions and not pave it?
Chip seal, right? Yes.
Okay. Basically, it would be chip seal.
Chip seal, yes.
Okay. Now, we know what we're talking about.
As I told Jason, it depends upon the quality of the chip seal, whether it's all-weather or not. We've got chip seal that's got trees growing in, and we've got chip seal that's very well-maintained.
Okay.
We've got county roads that are chip sealed that are well-maintained.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
We want chip seal all-weather.
Chip seal all-weather if, if that's what the variance would be granted to allow, if that's what you, what you do with it, okay?
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? Anyone online? To the commission? This will be a call for the vote.
Just a quick question. Clearly, the older homes along that road have, have been there for many years, and I certainly understand why they aren't paved. But it does appear that across the street in Barrett, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Barrett Place, those three homes that I can see on this picture appear to be fairly new and have concrete or, or asphalt entryways. Is there a reason why we would not want that for this, since those folks have invested in that money going across the street?
That's the question you're being asked.
So, is your question, I just want to make sure I understand. The question on here is off of East Brown, having initial entrance, exit onto East Brown as far as a concrete piece? Is that, was that your question?
No, sir. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just asking, it appears that across the street off of Barrett, they have, they have put a, more than just a chip and seal. And maybe I'm incorrect. If it's chip and seal, then I'm, then maybe that's correct. I'm just curious as to why we would not want to have the same standard for this new home that they apparently put into their new homes when they put those in.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
So, we're not build, it's not going to be a new build. We're planning on bringing another home from a different location and putting, putting it on this, on this lot in this location. I do agree that, that those are paved surfaces on Barrett with concrete driveways. I'm not arguing that, but, you know, for the intent of what we're trying to do, it's going to look very similar to the homes, the older homes that are out there already today.
But you're creating a tandem lot that sometime in the future, you could build a home similar to what's on the other side. Because a tandem lot is being, where you're getting approval for the tandem lot that already exists, but we're not setting the standard of what kind of house is going there.
Understood.
And I just have a follow-up question. I just want to make sure I'm real clear. So, the ask is not to pave it because you're putting an older home there?
We're, we're trying to meet, we're trying to meet minimum fire code. Minimum fire code is all-weather, and that meets 75,000 pounds, right? And that's what we're asking.
Okay.
But yes, you're putting a smaller home, not, that you're moving an existing home.
But that's not my, that's not the reason why I'm...
But you just want to meet the minimum requirements for what? For the, for the surface, but not for the, the code?
To meet...
If I'm saying that right?
That does meet fire code. Minimum fire code's all-weather, and that meets 75,000 pounds, right? And that's what we're asking.
Okay.
But yes, you're putting a smaller home, not, that you're moving an existing home.
But that's not my, that's not the reason why I'm...
But you just want to meet the minimum requirements for what? For the, for the surface, but not for the, the code?
To meet...
If I'm saying that right?
That doesn't meet fire code.
It wants to meet fire code, but not the subdivision requirements that says a paved toilet for access.
Okay. But it is going to be chip seal, so it's not going to be a normal gravel road.
Right, yeah. But it's not going to have two inches of asphalt on it either.
Any other questions from the commission?
So, where in the, where in the ordinance do we draw the difference between chip seal and gravel?
Well, we're not...
So, my question is if we're, if we're saying that chip seal's basically the same thing as, as paving it or as concrete, what's, if we approve a variance not to have to put down solid paving?
We're saying that the ordinance requires solid paving. To meet the minimum requirements for fire code, it can have the chip seal.
But the variance is not to put chip seal down, right? The variance is to not do solid paving.
Yeah, Peyton, if I'm hearing you correctly, is your, are you making a suggestion as far as variance for deviation of paved driveway requirement to be instead a chip and seal surface?
I'm just saying that this opens up the argument for every other person that we see after this to say, "Well, I'm going to do chip seal," right? But we don't distinguish between having the chip seal and having the hard surface from an ordinance standpoint. Am I correct?
Well, the tandem lot requirement in the subdivision regulations is the paved surface, has to be at least asphalt, but what...
And that's why Jason was saying that if they combined this as one lot and did a driveway back there, they would not have to put in a hard surface driveway.
Except they've got to have two paved parking spaces to meet the code for the single-family dwelling. Doesn't have to go all the way out to the street, but there has to be two paved parking spaces at that location for the residential.
Okay. That's what I needed clarification on, because I heard him say that earlier, and I, I didn't, I didn't understand that.
Right.
All right.
So, we're kind of mixing the subdivision regulations with the fire code, too, and I, I just wanted her to understand, to get the permit to put that out there and to meet the fire code, you've got to have that kind of surface, too.
So, so if this property were to change hands sometime in the future, this, this never gets changed like we...
I mean, once we grant the variance, you not have to pave the, the access drive, it wouldn't come back again unless they split it again or something else.
So, similar to some of the other issues that come before us about things being done in the past and then people, so we could be potentially...
But your question is, is that variance attached to the conditional use?
The conditional use, as approved right now, says you have to have it paved. If you don't get the grant, if you don't grant the variance, then it has to be paved.
Okay.
Okay?
Let's just say if the property sold and, and there was a desire to enforce that at that point in time, you could change that conditional use. As a commission, we could change that.
I guess you could, yeah. Conditional uses under the subdivision regulations are different than conditional uses under the zoning ordinance, because this is tied to the land, not tied to the use of the property. A conditional use is given in a zoning setting is given to that person at that location. In the subdivision regulations, you're giving a conditional use to a division of land that stays with the land itself.
Okay.
Sarah, is that correct?
That's correct, Patsy.
It's not the same thing. Once we get that, grant that variance for that to be a non-paved surface, it stays that way from now on.
And so, Patsy, does that also, does that also become grandfathered in and set the precedent for anything else that goes in after that on that side of the road?
Well, it's on a case-by-case basis. You have to decide if the next tandem lot warrants the, the conditional use or the variance for the paved surface.
So, our question is back to, we're, we're setting this and it's going to be this way. What's the, you know, what's the driving force behind allowing it this one time? I mean, that's what we have to ask ourselves, I guess, right?
Right. That's, that's the question. And, and the distance has not always been a deciding factor. The cost is not a side, deciding factor, and the size of the structure to be built has not been a deciding factor in the past, either.
And what's our reason for wanting to have it asphalt, like when we wrote...
So, that we have a paved hard surface to that property for aesthetics and for our site, fire or emergency services, too.
You, you asked a question earlier about what if it's sold and you put a different house in there or do something different. The actual area that you could put a house is, is actually very small there, because what's not shown on this picture is that there is a, a big easement that goes across the back for the Beaver Water District. So, the actual area, without us coming back to you again for a rezoning, you know, because your setbacks are 35 off the front, 35 off the back, 20 off the sides, well, in order for us to squeeze the house in there, it, it has to be a small house. It's not going to ever be a large house unless we put the lots together and did something different.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, and Mr. Covert?
Hughes?
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
David?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Three yes.
Uh, the variance does not pass. Uh, three yes, uh, five no, one recuse.
Thank you. Counsel?
Counsel doesn't hear the variance.
On the conditional use.
Counsel will hear the conditional use on the 22nd, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
But that's not on this piece of property, right?
Yeah, I believe the waivers are associated with this piece of property.
You have two waivers on these two pieces of property, too?
Not on these.
Yeah, it's not the same piece of property.
It's on 9553.
Yeah. It's the one right next to it.
It's further over.
Yeah, do you want to go ahead and hear those waivers that she asked for those at the same time?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so, we have waiver 20-12, um, Cammy Scott, 9553 East Brown Road, waiver sidewalk requirement presented by ESI, and 20-13, uh, 81-15, I'm sorry, 8915 East Brown Road, waiver sidewalk requirement presented by ESI.
Well, I will talk, e- either way, uh, we are moving a house in there. This was an established lot. We moved, there was a trailer house that was there, um, there were some people that were living in, in it and then in a travel trailer. We moved it out, we're putting a house there. Um, we have worked with buildings on the septic and, and that's been dug up. Um, city water is being put in there, we're moving a house in there, and so, there's not any other sidewalks out there. It's a steep, steep ditch, and so, we're requesting a waiver for there.
Staff comments?
Well, you know, I don't support sidewalk waivers, so, I mean, physically, it could be put in, correct?
It, you can do anything, given enough time and money, most anything, but, uh, the gas line, as Springdale Water found out the hard way today, runs right across through there where you would be putting the sidewalk, and so, um, your, your gas, your water, your telephone, you would have to do a significant cut to make it all work and to come into it.
Or put the sidewalk on top of those existing utilities. Yeah. Okay.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
I didn't hear what you, the very first thing you said, Patsy, I didn't hear what you said.
You could put the sidewalk on top of the utilities, if they're deep enough.
So, any questions or comments from the audience?
This is a recommendation to counsel, either for, or would you be willing to make payment in lieu of improvements for the sidewalk, and we hold them until the street is being improved?
We could do that. Half, the, the issue with this street, too, is that half of the street is Springdale and half of the street is Lowell, and so, if you make improvements, I would think you would want to make improvements to both sides of the street, so that would mean that Lowell would have to agree to do it.
We've done some of those in the past, not very often, but it does happen. You know? I mean, that's the other option, if you want to make payment in lieu of improvements as opposed to a waiver.
Sure, sure.
And it's based on this, on the footage across there, you make your payment to the city, the city holds it in escrow until work is done on that road itself. Okay?
Okay. So, we probably need to, because there are two separate waivers, we need to do...
Okay. The one at 8915, where is it?
8915 is to the west of that.
It's not in the same area.
It's not on here, no.
Yeah. Do you have the, do you have the...
For whatever reason, this is the only map we have.
Okay. And then you're building a single-family home on that lot?
Yes, that is correct.
Right. And you're asking for a waiver of a sidewalk at that location?
That is correct. It has...
But you would do payment in lieu of for that one as well?
We can. We prefer not to, but we can.
Okay.
Okay. The question is, do you want them to, to vote on the waiver itself and make a recommendation? Their recommendation to counsel can be payment in lieu of, the option of still granting the, the waiver is there.
Okay.
If that's what they want to do. But it has to be a motion made that way.
So, motion to approve with payment in lieu?
Right. Recommendation to counsel would be payment in lieu of improvements for these two sidewalk waivers.
But it's ultimately up to the property owner whether...
Well, and the council has to prove it, too. I mean, basically, if you waive the requirement for sidewalks, that means the taxpayers of the city have to pick that up sometime in the future if the improvement is...
Yeah. And I, I mean, I don't know, I generally, I'm not, I, I don't like putting that burden on everyone else.
But you can recommend it with a, grant the waiver, recommend that payment in lieu of improvements be made, whatever the commission decides to do.
I guess my question is to the home, to the property owner, I, I don't want to take her right to ask for a vote straight up or down without that.
She can do that if she wants to.
But I would, yeah, I don't, I don't want to take that from her, but I'll be happy to make that, that motion if, if that's what she wants us to do.
The ultimate decision is still the council's. You're making, the plan commission would be making a recommendation of which way you think it should go.
So, are you making a recommend, so, we're going to do both of these separate, because they are two different waivers on here. So, W 20-12, um, there's a recommendation, um, with the payment in lieu of.
Yeah, I, I, again, I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this, but if the property owner wants, I mean, I, I guess my question is, if the property owner wants us to make us, wants to not do that, and she just wants us to vote on the waiver, she still has that right, right? And I don't want to take that...
You can argue her case when it gets to counsel, that she doesn't want to do payment in lieu of...
Okay.
If that's your recommendation. But you have to make that as a motion.
All right, I'll make the motion to...
Recommend to council?
To recommend to council.
Payment in lieu of...
Payment in lieu of...
Right.
Okay, so I have a...
For 9553, correct?
This is 9553, yes. Uh, so, I have a recommendation by Mr. David. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
He's looking off to the side.
Yeah, Ben, I think you're on mute.
Did you recuse?
Ben, did you vote? We can't hear you.
I can't read lips, that...
Okay, okay.
I have eight yes and one recuse. Recommendation passes. Uh, W 20-13, I have a recommendation.
Are you making the same motion?
I'll, I'll make the same motion.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Mr. David.
Second.
Uh, waiver sidewalk requirements and with the payment in lieu of, and I have a second by Mr. Covert.
Who was the second?
Covert.
Okay.
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Recuse.
Tyler?
Yes.
I have eight yes and one recuse.
Okay, staff will prepare the resolution, goes to council on the 22nd with that recommendation. You need to be here that night.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Um, keep going back and forth on here. Finally got through conditional use on there, so, all right, so, replat 20-10, replat of lots eight through 11, block six, Carter Edition, south of West Sunset, west side of Young, presented by Bates and Associates. Yes.
My name is Jose Grias with Bates and Associates. Good evening.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, our client, Ryan Russell, has, uh, currently two parcels of land here that total about 0.73 acres, uh, and there's a existing building and parking area, and he was basically just trying to adjust the property lines or the existing parcel lines, move it down to, uh, just south of where the existing parking is, to create a new lot down there in hopes of sell in the future for commercial use.
Okay. Staff comments?
Uh, there are no planning comments. The engineering comments, you need to add the required signatures, and a calculated point is not a physical tie, either set the tie or provide a tie to an existing monument at another section corner with an existing monument.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Online? Please, is there anyone online with questions? Okay. Uh, so, to the commission? There's no questions or comments, this'll be a recommendation.
No, this is a...
It's a motion.
Motion, subject to staff comments.
All right, motion.
Motion to approve.
Uh, I have a motion by Mr. Covert. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Howard? Austin?
All right, so replat passes nine zero.
Uh, if you want this to go to city council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon on Thursday.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, large-scale developments, first L 20-19 Holiday Inn Express, 4401 West Sunset, presented by Swoop Engineering.
Hi, I'm Paul Sims with Swoop Engineering, and I have a three-story hotel. It's a Holiday Inn Express. We're proposing a site next to Lowe's, just off Sunset, and we're seeking your approval.
Staff comments?
Uh, in areas where parking area is located 10 feet or less from the street right-of-way, continuous raised concrete curb or not less than six inches in height shall be constructed along the perimeter of the parking area in parallel with the abutting street right-of-way, except for the driveway openings. Um, so, trees associated with the screening for the dumpster area, please remove the two shrubs located in the center of the southern driveway on sheet C 6.0. Perimeter landscaping is required with chapter 56. Um, you will be expected to obtain an access easement from the adjacent property owner. You may already have one, we need a copy of that.
Yes, we actually do have that.
Okay. We need, you need to provide that with it. I believe you submitted some new, uh, elevations that address the issues that we had with design standards.
Right. We received those this afternoon, we haven't had time to evaluate those, but, um, we have received them, so...
You want to show the, the ones that we have now? There is one concern with that space, um...
This, this is the updated elevations that we're looking at right now.
Oh, that's the updated. It still doesn't have a break in the one side. What are those little things at the bottom? Are those bushes or are those something, bollards in front of all that area?
Yeah, I believe those are planters for the shrubs.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, that there needs to be a break in that wall in that section, because there's not a break in that, both vertically and horizontally, because it's more than 30 feet. The exterior ground-mounted or building-mounted equipment, uh, has to be screened. Uh, is there AC units on the northwest side of the building? Is that what those are?
Yes, um, there is, and on the architectural set, on the floor plan sheet, you'll see that it calls for a, um, a screen in front of those AC units.
Okay.
I didn't note that on my site plan, but it is on the architectural site plan, and I can add that to mine.
You need to add that to your site plan, to the large-scale development plan. Engineering comments, the CRA profile shows HDPE pipe crossing, where it should be RCP. Revised the TC worksheets to drainage report, and if access road is public, which it's not, we don't have to worry about that. So, those are all the comments.
Yes, and those revisions will be addressed.
Okay.
That's it? Any questions or comments? It's to the commission? This'll be a motion.
Motion to approve large scale.
Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller?
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Large-scale passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, L 20-26 AMS, 3497 Wagon Wheel Road. It's also waiver of 20-15 of street improvements presented by Harrison French.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can barely hear you.
All right.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can barely hear you.
All right, that is usually not something I'm accused of is being quiet.
Yeah, that's better.
Great. This is Ryan Gill representing the project for Harrison French and AMS. Um, basically, uh, this project came through back in, um, excuse me, it came back through and was approved, uh, back in, on August tenth, no, I'm sorry, look at the wrong date, uh, a couple minutes ago and then we, uh, the client decided that during the COVID process, everything else, if they wanted to downsize their project, the original was expanding the building and adding square footage. Now they're doing an interior remodel and asking to do a, uh, a parking lot expansion. Um, as you can see here, we've submitted, uh, there is one waiver based on the street, uh, improvements and, uh, I'm never good at the processes on that, so, uh, speak to that now or speak to that later or y'all tell me.
Uh, why don't you go ahead and, and speak to the, the waiver as well?
Okay, so whenever the project was, uh, previously submitted, um, one, uh, that wasn't brought up. So both the east and west are private, uh, private drives, the, uh, the, uh, I'm trying to read it. The, uh, street on the west side of the property is definitely a private drive. The original, uh, granted deed for that is an access easement to the property to the south and the, uh, A cuff drive on the east has, uh, some right-of-way dedicated, but it does not come up to our property. Ultimately, the, bringing that up to street improvements would reduce the area for the, uh, existing facility on the west side and, uh, additional right-of-way would be, need to be dedicated on the east side. Additionally with that, the road, as you can see, to the south, uh, becomes gravel and those are all large, uh, farm homes with, uh, no right-of-way dedicated, so it's not foreseeable that this would be developed at any time, uh, in the far foreseeable future. So, uh, be happy to, uh, uh, answer any questions from that.
And staff comments?
Okay, so the building itself is not being enlarged, correct?
No ma'am.
Okay, and the parking lot is being extended to the east?
East, yes ma'am.
Towards, towards A cuff?
Okay, and it will have access off of A cuff to the south of where, to the south of the property now?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay, and what kind of proposes, proposal are you making for modifications to the building itself?
The only, the only modifications are a, uh, small overhang over one door and then the rest is all, uh, to the interior.
Okay.
Obviously some ex, uh, exterior squeezing up the building, but no, the footprint will not change other than an overhang.
Okay, the, uh, grading permit currently is open from the previous approved plans. Please reach out to Katie regarding reissuing this permit for the new plans. A street light is required on wagon wheel and if you have that access easement, oh, we need an access easement from drainage easement to A cuff drive.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Austin, is there anything else?
No, I believe it's it.
No, okay.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So the waiver on the street improvements is the parking lot's going east towards A cuff?
Right, and they're asking for no improvements to A cuff drive?
Okay.
How wide is A cuff drive currently?
How wide is A cuff? Can somebody answer that?
I am pulling up, sorry, right now. Sorry, Ben, I don't have that committed to memory. Um, it is...
Not very wide, I know that.
I'm trying to get there guys.
More or less than twenty-four feet is the magic question in my mind.
Uh, it is, I'm gonna not guess because that always backfires on me. Confirm that. Sorry. So, let's say it's twenty and I'm gonna call that, it is roughly twenty feet. And I can allow it...
Aren't two-way drives required to be twenty-four?
Yes, they are.
Even for a private drive?
Well, you're, you're still doing two-way, that's your only access to that parking lot.
No ma'am, you can still exit to the, uh, west through the existing parking. They are connected.
So why would you open up to, to A cuff then? So it could be one-way, I guess then? So it need, only needs to be a one-way drive?
Hi, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
I said, so are you proposing it to be a one-way drive where you come in off of four-twelve on the west side, go through the parking lot and you can exit only on to A cuff going out?
Uh, no ma'am, that was not our intent. Again, it was, uh, presented, we were planning on it being a, uh, a driveway as it is and, uh, fire can still access through the, uh, west side of the, uh, parking lot through the current, uh, conditions that they are currently, it, the building currently is.
So Ben, your point is the waiver of street improvements on A cuff doesn't bring it up to standard for a two-way drive if we waive those street improvements?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying. I don't know that it needs to be brought up to full public street standards, but I think since it serves multiple properties, it probably ought to be at least the minimum of a drive width that we require for a private drive.
What are the, what are the exact things where we would be waiving?
Well, they're asking you not to do anything to A cuff drive and leave it just as it is.
But that parking lot will empty, open up to A cuff?
Right. And Ben's comment is it needs to be widened to at least wide enough to be a two-way drive, which would be twenty-four feet.
Okay.
Yeah, if we leave it, I mean, if we allow it to be built like it is right now, then A cuff won't be able to be widened to twenty-four feet without getting into the parking lot.
So are you making...
Katie, let me ask you, engineering, did you look at that, uh, connection to that driveway on that side? Because I don't see any comments.
Um, the only comment I had about the drive was that since it is private, we'll need an access easement, um, to, uh, access the drainage easement, um, but since it was private, that, that's all I had as far as comments on the roads.
So the minimum for a two-way is twenty-four?
Yes. Minimum width for a two-way drive is twenty-four feet.
I mean, for a commercial operation like this, it's, I mean, difficult to hear that waiver as far as, unless it was gonna be a one-way.
Correct.
So a recommendation could be as far as this waiver with an incremental four feet?
Well, I guess the, the motion would be to recommend to council a waiver requiring it to be...
You know, to bring it up to at least the standard it is, but not necessarily the full curve and guttering.
Not, not to build it to a straight, but make it an access drive that has a minimum width of twenty-four feet.
So by doing that, that will inherently require the redesign of the entire parking lot to be a one-way, uh, so that we would be able to meet the requirements of the five-foot landscape bumper, buffer. Um, it would reduce the parking lot, scooting it ultimately to the west and therefore, uh, kind of domino with the, totally the size of the detention, um, and the foreseeable future that they could develop and build their addition to the building at a later date. That makes sense.
Well, even at your additional building in the future at a later date, you're...
Well, if...
You need to meet that.
If the waiver is denied, you gotta redesign it anyway because you gotta do, bring it up to street.
[laughing].
Yeah. This is where we get into a problem when we're accessing things off of unimproved access drives that don't meet the minimum requirements and...
And here's the concern is, is that, you know, hearing that, um, and hearing that there's a pretty significant redesign of the large-scale itself, um, I mean, I'd, I'd almost recommend that this be tabled. Because if that waiver does fail, um, I mean, we're looking at, looking at the large-scale as-is. But what I'm hearing from Harrison French is, is that they'd have to redesign it anyway.
It appears so, yes.
So, I'm looking to see, I'm looking at the plan and racking my brain on, uh, um, if possible, one of the frontage of the, where the existing parking is, uh, obviously that's nine-foot width of the parking, it could shift the four feet, um...
Well, we're not in the business of designing at the table, so...
I understand, um, well, I'm also sitting here trying to think of how to continue with the waiver so this could be approved with that condition of, uh, meeting the four feet. It would definitely, uh, reduce the buildable area that the client wanted to keep for their previous design, um, assuming they ever wanted to continue with that.
Because wasn't the previous large-scale building to the east?
Uh, it was an addition to the existing building.
But that addition would be to the east?
Yes sir, that's correct.
But was it gonna have access off of...
Well, that...
Yes ma'am, it did.
Off of, uh, wagon wheel road, not A cuff, right?
No ma'am, it still had access there as well.
Would the parking, would the parking change with that future development?
Uh, if you can see where there shows the patio area and a sidewalk, that's where the building would be, uh, constructed.
Okay.
I don't know, the addition.
I mean, we can hear this as-is, um, in here with the, with us adding in there as far as the, the need to add the additional four feet so that it can be a two-way street, um, but the large-scale would be as-is submitted. Now, if you have any major redesign, it all have to be redone anyway. But we can go ahead and hear it the, the way you're requesting it right now.
So the, the previous metal did not have the flow-through of the parking from one, one drive to the other. It was a, uh, two, four, six, a twelve-spot parking lot at the rear of the building, um, with, uh, that you would access off of A cuff, go in and leave back out off of A cuff. Uh, just for clarity. I, I don't know what the, the best play is here guys, so, uh, and ladies, so we're, if we do the four feet, then obviously we are going to have to provide a redesign of the parking lot.
You're, you're gonna have to come back to us regardless, it sounds like.
Correct.
My recommendation is that you table it, but that's up to you.
As the alternative would be to proceed with our waiver, city council, or to you guys, or whether it happens or not, and then we still have to come back to you guys, correct?
Yes, you're still gonna have to come back if you have to redesign it, so what is there to be gained by going forward with it until it's redesigned?
Uh, the benefit of not having to give up the additional four feet to allow the client to have it still build blary off the private drive. I guess I would request to be tabled at this time.
So we are tabling L twenty dash twenty-six and the waiver twenty dash fifteen. Thank you. Next item, uh, large-scale twenty dash twenty-seven Paint Innovators, north of Treat Lane, east side of Fortieth Streets. Uh, we also have a waiver, twenty dash fourteen, waiver of street requirements along the northern property line, uh, one thirty-three South Fortieth, and a variance for B twenty dash forty for deviation aside setback on the north property line from twenty feet to ten feet, presented by EDA.
Uh, I'm James Gertz with EDA, uh, presenting this project. We came about a year ago with something on this project previously and we're coming back with a redesign because everything expired. One of the things that's changed was Emma Street has been relocated to go over the interstate, so it won't no longer be on our property, so that's what the waiver's about.
Okay. Staff comments?
Standard comments about all the other utility companies and city departments must be addressed, the power lines have to be put underground, um, frontage landscaping does not appear to include any tree plantings. Uh, there's a utility easement there, but there are certain species that you can put of trees in that, that'll work on that. That needs to be done.
Okay.
Internal walkways distinguished by some of the kind of driving surface pavers, bricks or scored concrete.
Okay.
Um, screening, uh, for commercial districts shall provide a solid screening fence or wall not less than six feet in height along any rear and side property that's, which are common to property zones for residential purposes. Uh, screening shall be required where similar screening exists on the abutting residential property. Um, engineering has submit the grading permit application and they support the waiver of the street requirements on the north property line because the Emma Harbor extension is not bordering this piece of property as we thought it was going to in the future.
Correct.
Okay, and then you're asking for a side setback on the north side from twenty to ten? Why?
We believe the north, uh, property is being used as residential, but it could be redeveloped as a commercial property following the future land use plan, so that's why we're...
Basically, you want to build closer, you got a bigger building and you want to make it, okay.
Correct.
The previous large-scale that was submitted didn't ask for that variance, did it?
No, because the north edge was Emma Street, we were dedicating thirty feet right-of-way.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
I believe that's all we had.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes sir. Yeah, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Leon Hodge. I own the property on the north side of this, uh, Innovators and, uh, I'm concerned about just exactly what's going on. I understand the waiver of the street because the street is not gonna be there anymore, so that part is, is no problem, but the variance for the devia, devia, deviation of the side setback, uh, that, that's what I'm mainly concerned about, of course, and, uh, I'm wondering, will this still require a fence along there? I'm also, or should we look at this individually?
Go ahead. We are still require, we're still indicating that there has to be screening provided.
I'm, I'm sorry, didn't understand, ma'am.
There, there has to be screening provided, which could be a fence, could be landscaping, could be a berm and those types of things.
Okay, now, there's a fence there now, it's not really too good-looking, but it's there, but in between that fence and my property, the ten feet, uh, it's a mess. Stuff's been dumped in there, uh, it's growed up, it's not been taken care of in the least bit, and whatever they do, uh, of course, I don't know if this is a place to talk about that or not, but, uh, that's the reason I need to get it looking better than what it is, I think. Of course, the fence that I have there separating the two properties is just a, a barbed wire fence. Uh, well, I've got about sixty foot of chain link and that has not been abused, I don't believe that much, except they do park over there, up close to the fence, or they have in times past. Uh, but anyway, I'm, I'm concerned about that, the fence, I'm concerned about the way it looks now and the way it's still gonna be looking in the future, whatever they do there. Uh, if I'm looking at this picture right, and I don't see too well anymore, but, uh, is that gonna be a building on the, uh, north side and the south side?
Yes, they're proposing two structures.
One on, on...
One on the north side, on your side, and they want to put it within ten foot of the property line. And his explanation was he doesn't anticipate your property would remain commer, would remain residential in the future, that someday it could be commercial use and that's why they want to put it closer to the side.
Well, it's very likely it will be, probably not as long as I'm alive, but, uh, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm planning on probably keeping it just like it is, as far as I know. Of course, you're gonna be buying part of the property or the city is sometime or another on the, on the, uh...
For the street.
On the north side of my property.
Yeah.
In fact, they're coming out this week to assess it, uh, assessor.
The, the space that you say that is not being taken care of and cleaned up, is that belong, is that on your property or on their, on the addition?
That's on their property.
Okay, well, I have to clean that up as part of the development.
Well, I, I, I was kinda holding off about saying anything simply because of, of the fact that they had originally thought the road was gonna come through there, which would eliminate that problem.
Right, right.
But that's not the case now and, and then I've gone through a lot of things over the last year.
It'll have to be cleaned up as part of this development and what you're proposing, do we have a landscape plan that shows what kind of landscaping's going on that side? There'll be trees that's planted on your side between the property line and their building. That's what you're showing on there, right James?
We also have a fence, a fence that's called...
Right, they'll put in a privacy fence on that side too.
Well, there's a fence there now, it doesn't look real well, like I said earlier.
Well, they have to put in their own privacy fence, they won't use the existing fences there.
Oh, they'll put in another fence?
They're gonna put in a new fence, yes.
Does that fence, does that require that to come out to the Fortieth Street?
Well, it can't be, it only comes out to the edge of the, of the building, the new building itself. It won't extend all the way out because it creates a, a traffic issue if it's that tall of a fence all the way out to the front.
That was, that was the deal earlier because of the road coming through, but I didn't know if now that would make a difference.
Yeah.
Since the road's not coming through. Uh, and so there will be two buildings and one on one north side and one on the south.
Yes.
But there will be a...
Fence on your side?
Fence.
With trees.
With trees.
Right.
Well, I think that's all I have wrote down here.
Sir, wha, I'm sorry, what was your property address again? I didn't hear at the beginning.
Property?
Address, yes sir.
Hold it.
That's your...
Talking about, it's one twenty-three North Fortieth.
The house just to the north of it, yeah. Um, how are we handling, you know, you've got the drainage well on the south side of the property that goes along the south and then comes back out to the creek?
If you can let him come up to the mic for just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Drainage is being controlled by two discharge points on the east side. There's an existing ditch on the adjacent property that heads towards the north that this site kinda sheet flows into, so we've designed it to take that concrete channel from the south to discharge into that ditch and then on the north end, we're taking another area to discharge to the north.
Okay, do you have an easement to discharge into that because it's not on your property?
Well, it's an existing channel that this is already sheet flowing and we're trying to revert back to sheet flow off of our drainage structures with the use of riprap and, and long areas of...
But is that drainage easement, there is a drainage easement for that existing channel?
I have no idea if there's drainage easement there now.
Katie? Do you know if...
So if they're not changing any existing flow patterns with their design, um, then they, they can drain to, you know, where the water always went before.
Even though that drainage channel's not on their property?
Yes, because that's an existing drainage path.
Okay, I knew there was one to the east of that, I didn't know there was one on the west side of that.
I'm sorry, there should be the drainage channels on the east side. It's going, flows towards the north.
But the property that's next to you has a drainage channel on the east side of it. You're saying there is one on the west side too?
Well, it's on the east side of my property, it'd be on the west side of their...
And it's got concrete in it?
No, it's just an earthen ditch.
Oh, okay, okay.
Flows towards the north.
Because the, the concrete one's further on over. Because the concrete one's further on over.
Land on the other feet, whoever that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Each of them, but that property has, because I know of no drains up there myself.
Yeah.
And I watch the river.
Okay. I didn't know there was a drainage swell through there. Don't see it on the, on the drives.
If you go to the grading plan, I mean, it's not much of a ditch, but...
But you're basically sheet flowing off of that parking, or off of that drainage swell you're putting on the south side is going to sheet flow into the adjacent property.
Correct. And it's what it's been doing this whole time.
And you don't have to have a flow easement or anything to do it onto another piece of property?
We're not increasing flows off the site.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, if that doesn't...
Go ahead, if you can step up to the mic, sorry.
Now, if that doesn't go to these other people's property, which is east of their property, I certainly do not want it to come onto mine, which would be on the north I don't know anything about a drainage through there myself. Of course, I've not been back there walking around on their property either, back in the back, so on the east side, which would be on the east side of mine as well. You do go back all the way to my property. You go all the way back to where?
Yeah, if you can speak into the mic.
On your acre? I have two acres there is what I have.
So, Brush Creek runs just to the northeast of this property, and so, you know, the way the existing contours are, the land flows towards the creeks, so once it leaves the site, it'll follow the same path.
But it's still going, it's still going across another pieces people, property to get to the creek, right? The creek is not adjacent to this piece of property.
No.
And we don't need an easement across that other piece of property to get this over there? That's what you're saying?
Because they are not doing any improvements and this is following the existing pattern of the land, the way the land flows downhill to the creek as it leaves the property, and since they're not increasing any flow or connecting to the city stormwater network.
Because you're considering...
Will just have sheet flow across the land.
You're considering, because all of it already has gravel and stuff on it, it's all the same when you go back and put buildings and concrete and all that stuff on there?
That's what their drainage report shows, that there is no increase in runoff since the property is not, the impervious surfaces are not increasing.
Good.
Now, there is, so...
And since they've made use of the riprap pads in the back, I think that, that's a pretty good for velocity dissipation and energy dissipation, so if they didn't have those concrete, or I mean, excuse me, the riprap pads, I'd be a little more concerned, but with that, it breaks up the flow and allows for sheet flow, so you're not going to get a concentrated channel, you know, shooting off the property.
Yes, sir.
I just hope she knows what she's talking about because I don't understand it. Now, I do get some water coming pretty good down at the very back of mine. I've never backed there hardly, but I mean, I know from the water that comes to my, my barn that's back there, so I want to be sure that there's no more coming that way, you know what I'm saying?
And what they were going through right there is the, the calculations of what the water flow is today, with them making the, with them putting the new buildings in, that water flow, based on their calculation, stays constant in that whole piece, there's not an increase in that one.
I can handle it constantly. I mean, I'm not having a great lot of, I'm not having any problem with it the way it is.
Yeah, I just wanted you to understand as far as what, what we were just going through in that whole piece.
Okay, well, I didn't understand maybe all of it there.
Yeah, and then they're adding as far as on the east side of the property, as far as the ability to make it more of a, a sheet draining, meaning that it's spread out versus being a channel type piece. So, I just wanted to make sure you understood that, especially since you're the northern property on that one. And so, I think we've addressed that concern of yours and then the, the screening as well, that yes, they will have a fence and landscaping that'll be up on your side of the properties on it.
That'll be behind the barn, or shop, whatever they're building.
That's right.
In that 10 acres, or 10 acres, 10 feet.
Did we address everything for you?
I think you did.
All right, well, I appreciate you staying tonight and being patient with us, it's been a long time on it that you waited.
We have a lot to do, so...
Yeah, we do, we definitely do, so, well, thank you.
I was going to say, though, I commend you people very, very much. I've sat here tonight and I wouldn't want to be here.
Yeah.
We've got a job.
Yeah, he did come up to me at the beginning of the meeting and ask about as far as should he stay for this, and so, I appreciate you doing this. This is one of our longer meetings on it, but we hope we addressed everything for you.
I hope so, I hope so.
Good deal, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If we have anyone online that has any questions? Okay, it's to the commission.
Just want to confirm, we're going to vote on these separately, right?
We will.
Okay.
So...
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Ben.
Okay. I know that the master street plan showed a street going along the north side, and I understand that we are designing a road to go to the north that will now cross over the interstate, but is the trail going to go with the road because this is also on the trail plan?
Yes. The road will have a 10-foot or a 12-foot side path on the north side of it as it comes across.
Okay.
It goes with it.
And then I have one other question. James, did we equate gravel to have the same sea value as concrete, or is there increased impervious area that offset the difference in that sea value?
No, we didn't equate to concrete, it's a little bit lower, but we did increase some perviousness by parking islands, some green space in the back, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the world didn't think that concrete and gravel had the same runoff coefficient.
Last one, little thing.
Yeah, go ahead and come up to the mic.
On that water that's running off and going onto the back of the property, east of, of the property, that highway or road that's going to be put in is going to be coming right along that, I guess it'd be the south side of that runoff, right? I mean, the, the main runoff, that Brush Creek or whatever it's called, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I think so. I haven't seen the plans for, for the connection across through there, but yes, they would have to take care of that. There would have to be a drainage easement that goes with the road.
Well, I was wondering if there wasn't going to have to be something done to keep that...
Yes.
From all of a sudden running toward me, if you will, if we're honest.
Yes, there will be something that, that addresses that, and if you want to see what that looks like, you need to contact the city engineer so you can look at the plans for the street.
Well, I've seen, I've seen those drawings, in fact, I've got some of them, but I wasn't considering this when I was looking at it, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry I had to come back.
That's, that's quite all right, thank you. Ben, did you have any more questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? So, we will take these as separate ones on here, we can do the variance, which will be a call for the vote. So, this is the deviation aside setback from north property line from 20 feet to 10 feet.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert. No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Variance passes eight-one, and recommendation for street improvements along the north property line, the waiver for street improvements, that would be a recommendation.
Your motion to recommend no street improvements required on the north line because there's an existing project in design that relocates the road.
I have a motion by Mr. Peters, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Waiver passes nine-zero, and I have a motion on a large scale.
Motion to approve the large scale subject.
I have a motion by Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second by Mr. David.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Large scale passes nine-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the waiver go to the 22nd?
Yes, the waiver will go to the 22nd.
All right, thank you.
Next section, board of adjustments, we have B 20-41, Mathias Properties, Lot 3, Brush Creek Business Park, variance for deviation and commercial design standards for sides and exterior walls, materials and colors presented by Nielsen Architects. Do I have anyone from Nielsen Architecture?
No one online?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Yeah, my name is Nate Pierce, I'm with Nielsen Architecture, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Mathias Properties. We are requesting a variance to the commercial design standards on the north, south, and west elevations of the proposed building. If this variance is granted, the structure will closely match the building to the north per request of the client, who intends to use it as an additional Sam's Furniture Retail location. We've utilized alternating metal panels and contrasting colors and patterns, masonry elements, and quite a bit of landscaping similar to the previous one to break up the facade and give it the similar look that the clients requested. With those items and the site orientation, we feel that the proposed elevations do meet the intent of the commercial design standards.
Staff comments?
So, what percentage of the exterior materials, I mean, what is the largest percentage of exterior materials of the entire building, not just ones that's on at the time?
It would be the metal panels.
Okay. And they are the standard metal panels, they're meth, metal panels, I don't say that very well. They're not enhanced or any other kind like we've used at other locations, they're the same panels that are used on the other stores?
Yeah, the charcoal panel, the darker gray, that's the, it's a 7.2 mega rim, so it is a heavier duty accent panel that we typically would use on commercial structures. We've had really good luck with it, it holds up well, is a durable material, and it's pretty attractive, in my opinion.
Okay, it doesn't create a break in the facade that's a minimum of three-foot depth, though? It's the same...
No, man, that was the variance that we're seeking.
And what are the lengths of the sides of the buildings? I mean, they're all more than 100 feet, correct?
Correct.
You said additional landscaping, you're putting foundation landscaping along the front, trees, perimeter landscaping, parking lot landscaping and all that is being done as part of the project. This doesn't come in as a large scale because it's an approved commercial lot, so that's why you don't see the whole thing.
Correct.
I don't think I have any other question, any other comments.
Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission? This be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
David?
No.
Mueller? Parker?
We have five yes and four no, the variance passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item, B 20-42, Michael Coover, 1511 Berkshire Terrace, variance for deviation of height of fence from three feet to six feet presented by Michael Coover.
Good evening. We are asking for a variance in our fence, we live at a cross-section of two streets, and we want to make our backyard bigger, so we're, we want to incorporate our sideyard, which we don't really use because it's just kind of sitting there. We want to do that, but we want a six-foot fence. The city code asks for a three-foot fence because we have the intersection roads or street, so we're asking for a six-foot fence instead of a three-foot.
Staff comments?
So, the fence would start at the front edge of the house where the garage is now and go out to Berkshire Terrace and then come to the back, that's the side you're trying to include in, correct?
Berkshire Terrace is actually the other side.
Okay, which way does your house face?
It faces north, this is the east side of the house.
Okay, which street does it face?
You'd think I'd know that, wouldn't you?
Look at, look at this drawing that's up here on the wall.
The, the yard faces on the, on the...
The Buckingham Terrace side, right?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so you're, you want to fence the side from the...
From the...
Edge of your driveway over to Berkshire Terrace to include that side of the street, of your, of your yard into your back?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And you would, it would line up with the edge of the, of the house, and you would start there and go over and then go back to the...
It will actually start with my neighbors and my fence, and it will go out, we're going to go eight feet from the street, and then we will go over about eight feet from our driveway and back to the house.
Okay, the issue we're going to get into is making sure you're not creating a sight distance problem when you pull up to that intersection.
Okay.
So, you had included some pictures of others that had done this as well?
Yes.
Are those eight feet?
I did not measure them.
Okay.
No, I don't think there's going to be a, I, I think we've got it mixed up here, I don't think there's, it's not going to be on the Berkshire Terrace side, it's on the Buckingham Terrace side, so it's not on that corner there.
Okay, so it's from the driveway to the, if you're going to the bottom of the page?
Yes.
Okay.
The front of the house actually faces Berkshire Terrace.
Okay, okay. So, you'll be far enough away from the intersection that you're not creating a problem, the yellow line that you showed on your, on your drawing, is that... Okay, I understand now, I was confused, I had it the other way around. I have one comment that was received, and did you all get a copy of that in your packet?
We did.
Okay, so it, asking for that to be set back for 20 feet, and we'll put that into the record as well, unless you want me to read it.
No, I mean, the, the letter came from Susan Clausar, it's 1536 Berkshire Terrace.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments in the audience? Anyone online? Okay, it's to the commission.
Chair, just a quick question for clarification, this, the way this fence would be drawn or put in would still leave the northeastern corner of their yard free of any fence so they could see between the Berkshire Terrace and Buckingham Terrace street connections, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is the fence going to be eight feet from the sidewalk?
Yes.
Or eight feet from the street?
From the sidewalk.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the planning commission?
I have a, a little concern about the, uh, visual. If you're pulling out of the driveway at thirty-eight hundred property immediately to the south, because of the way Buckingham Terrace is getting ready to bulge out, um, I'm not sure if you were the driver in that car, you'd be able to see if it's eight feet off of the sidewalk. Normally, um, if you were doing a side yard, it would be eight feet from the right-of-way line, which would then be, what does that work out to be? Eighteen feet from the curb? So I think that's two feet different than what he's asking for.
Well, and, I mean, all of that is different than what we're, what this variance is stating too.
Right, we're, we're talking about the height of the, he wants, the variance is for is from the height of it from three feet to six feet. It would have to be set where it doesn't create that visual barrier at six feet. And Ben, I think you're right, it would have to be set back another two feet. Is that what we're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is in a similar situation, if this were a side yard, you would normally have an eight-foot setback. And so you would be ten feet off of the curb to the right-of-way line, then another eight feet to the setback. So that's eighteen feet from the curb. What he's requesting is sixteen feet from the curb.
Right.
My opinion and my experience in other situations like this, I think eighteen feet from the curb is the appropriate number. But I leave that, the rest of the commission to determine that as well.
So just so you're aware, I mean, what, what, uh, Ben is bringing up is, is that this is right here, you wanna have a variance to have it from three feet to six feet as far as the height of the fence.
Correct.
If you were to build this fence based off of where you have the yellow line, you could be in a circumstance as far as if you did that, you could be needing to come back for another variance based off of side setback requirements. So in order to alleviate that, it's, it's gonna be really important to understand and make sure you comply with those side setbacks. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Did I represent that appropriately? Okay.
We're really talking about just the heights today, not the location. You have to put the location of the fence in the right spot, but you're asking for it to be six feet instead of three.
Correct.
Okay.
No, I think it's a combination of the two because the requirement is three feet in any front yard. And he's ta- talking about doing a six-foot in the front yard, so that variance is for the height of the fence. Now, if he's limiting it to a distance from the back of, of sidewalk, that's also a variance of six feet where in the front yard. So I think both of those questions are really being asked at the same time.
Except it wasn't advertised that there was a variance for the location only for the height, because that's all he asked for.
Technically, it's not his front yard. His front yard faces Berkshire Terrace.
But it's frontage on this one. But, but on this one, it's considered two frontage.
Yeah, he has two fronts.
That's true.
Yep.
It is two fronts, and there's normally not a setback for a fence.
Right.
Except that you can't have a, a fence greater than three feet high in a front yard. So I'm, I'm with him. I, I understand what he wants to do, and I agree to a six-foot fence in the front yard there because it's really his backyard. It's just the front yard from its location relative to the street. I just don't want the six-foot fence to get too close to the street so that the folks who live at thirty-eight hundred can't see when they're backing out of their driveway.
Well, I agree with you there.
So basically, what we're saying is you're making this a side yard instead of front yard and allowing it to be six feet, but it has to be at that eight-foot location from the side of the house?
Uh, eighteen feet from the curb or eight feet from the, the back of sidewalk.
Right. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, I think we got it.
Okay. So this be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Okay.
This variance passes nine zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, B twenty dash forty-four, Jerry Lawson, five oh four Sherman, variance for deviation of rear setback from twenty feet to ten feet, presented by Jerry Lawson.
Yes, I'm Jerry Lawson. I live on five oh four Sherman Street. Um, there is a building on my net northwest corner property line, and I wanted to take and remodel it. So in order to do that, I wanted to tear it down and just redo it, but then since it's on the property lines more or less, I have to move it out into my yard further. Twenty foot would be almost unacceptable because of a small, older neighborhood and the size of the house and stuff. So ten foot would be acceptable, I guess. And right now, it's on my north property line almost, and I'm gonna move it back the eight foot over, and hopefully, this building's thirty-plus years old. It leaks, it, doors is falling off of it and stuff. Just wanted to build a new storage shed and make it look nice and try to get within codes of where it needs to be.
Okay, thank you. I think we're gonna hear some staff comments on this. If you can let him come up to the mic.
Um, yeah, we, uh, we've, he started building this building and then we found it. Um, the, the issue here is, there's several issues. One is, is that it's right next to the existing building. Is the existing building coming down?
Yes, that was the plan.
So, so he's gonna build this building, the existing building's coming down, um, so then he's gonna give you, we'll get it within, within this variance here. The other issue comes in, how tall is that building?
The old building was probably ten foot. The new one has eight foot, well, plus a four foot runoff, so twelve foot.
So we're less than sixteen feet. We're less than sixteen feet then?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just concerned we need another variance there. So other than that, then there's, you know, the fire marshal's comments always with, with rear setbacks, he doesn't, doesn't support those. Still there, Blake? But other than that, we have no issue. The biggest issue is whether he was gonna tear down the non-conforming building.
He said that fire marshal doesn't support that?
Fire marshal never supports, fire department never supports variances inside rear setbacks.
Yeah. Sorry, it's Blake Holt from Fire. We do, uh, typically not support variances to side or rear setbacks. In this case, though, it looks like he's actually improving the situation.
Thank you, Blake. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? This be a call for the vote? Uh, have a call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, B twenty dash forty-five, Daniel and Juan Lemus, variance for deviation of side setback from thirty feet to thirteen feet seven inches, presented by Tim West.
My name is Tim West with Atlas Land Surveying. Mister and Mrs. Lemus own the property at five oh six Zachary Street. In that image there, the existing house has burnt down in two thousand nineteen, I wanna say the middle of two thousand nineteen. They are in the process of trying to rebuild. Um, with that being a corner lot, they have two fronts as setbacks, which Frederick has a thirty-foot building setback, as well as Zachary Street has a thirty-foot building setback. Their new home that they are proposing will front Frederick Street, their garage will, and in their proposed plan, their garage actually sits, it encroaches into the thirty-foot building setback of Frederick, Frederick Avenue, sorry. And they are proposing, their requested setback would be thirteen seven inches, a difference of sixteen five inches in footage.
And that is on which?
That is on Frederick Avenue.
They want it, but they're building on, are you, I'm sorry, did you say garage is on Zachary?
Uh, garage will be, their entrance and garage will be facing Frederick.
How much larger a structure is this than what burned down?
It's actually smaller. The existing structure encroaches further into the building setback than their proposed structure will.
Okay. And as it, they can't build back without this variance, even though it was destroyed, and they can put it back less than what it was to start with? Sure why we're getting a variance if we're trying to-
We-
Oh.
Yeah, we were told if they built on the exact footing, the exact footprint of the old home, then they would allow the permit. In which it's a little different configuration, it's a smaller home, but yet still is gonna, with that lot, with a thirty-foot front on each side, essentially you would not be able to build a house, period, with those-
I, I was just confused because if they were putting it back after it was destroyed, they could put it back just like it was, but since they put the foundation. So basically, they're putting back a smaller structure than what was there before, which has the same configuration as the previous one. Because the garage was on the Frederick side, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're not changing anything other than now we're building a smaller structure and need the setback requirements. Right? Okay, got it.
Anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Yes, it's call for vote. Call for vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero. Thank you. They do realize that this has sidewalk requirements?
Yes, you have to build sidewalks with it.
And all that'll be building permit and-
Right. Your, your building permit will say you have to do the sidewalks. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Uh, let's see, we have B twenty dash forty-seven, Rousco Man Homes, um, thirty-six eighty-four Kelso Avenue, variance for deviation aside setback from six feet, I'm sorry, eight feet to seven and a half feet, presented by Hillary Bell.
Yeah, I'm Matt Walters with Rousco Man. I'll be here for Hillary.
Uh, wait, 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 wait.
We do.
Okay, never mind. Go ahead. I'd make sure you can do this.
Okay, okay. Um, what we've got is, uh, Lot one twenty-five over in a Eastview community. Uh, the lot has been vacant for about four years, mostly because we've had some difficulty finding something that met the lot size and also the CCR, so we had to do some product development. We do have a plan now that fits. Um, but what we've got is the overhang, not the actual building itself, but the roof overhang in the right rear corner and the left side. They're three inches over the setback, so we've got three inches on the right rear and three inches on the left side. So that's why we're requesting a variance, so we can, um, finish that lot that's been set vacant.
Okay. Staff comments?
I don't have any unless Ed has something. Nope.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, if you'll just come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Jamie Cossey. I live at three six six two Kelso Avenue, the adjacent lot next door. And they just recently started to build on the lot one three seven nine that's vacant across from it. I did take some pictures to show the difference, so I don't, don't wanna waste your time. We're in a POA. We have very strict guidelines about how far everything's away from the easements, how far everything's away from the front and the back, and if you look, everything matches. And we had to buy houses according to that. Those two lots, I was told was unbuildable when I purchased my home due to the size. There, there was no way that you could build on them. They put it up for purchase, I wanna say, six months ago, asked me to purchase, and said there, there's a lot of stuff to go through, because I asked about building on it. It has to fit into the circum, the, whatever the plans are for the rest of the homes in division. The one that they had built next door that I did not know, they came in and asked for variance, is within four feet of the, of the fence line to the one next to it. I have pictures. I'm just asking that they may, you know, that they have to follow the rules that everybody else in the whole subdivision has had to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? To the commission?
So am I correct that the, that the total variance is for how many inches? Six inches?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is that, I couldn't hear.
Yes.
Three inches in the right corner and three inches along the left side.
And so, yeah, I'm sorry, I just don't understand why we would do a variance for three inches. I feel like it's just as easy to change the house three inches.
Well, the, the plan that we have is a two-story plan, and the second story is cantilevered, and we've looked at trying to modify it, um, trying to make some adjustments to it, but, um, just, just based off of the floor plan, and that, the way the, the overhangs already are, I don't think there's any way to make that aesthetically pleasing. So, um, it's just gonna be a little bit too short for us to go down, because right now, we're sitting at an eight-inch overhang, and if we take off three inches, you're looking at a five-inch overhang, and it's gonna be pretty noticeable on the house.
What is the square footage of the home, if I may ask?
Sixteen, I can tell you exactly. It is sixteen ninety, I think, sixteen eighty, something like that. I'm trying to find the actual print.
I just wanna make sure, because I apologize, due to being on Zoom, I wanna make sure I heard you correctly. You're saying that the home is roughly sixteen to, to seventeen hundred, if I understood you correctly?
Just under seventeen hundred square foot.
Okay, seventeen hundred square feet, and we can't come up with six inches in that? Is that what you're saying?
Sixteen eighty-nine square foot. Yeah, it, it's a hip, with the hip roof and us shrinking that down, uh, yes.
I, I, I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm struggling to understand. Well, I, I would understand if we said, look, it's sixteen hundred and we need to cut it to twelve hundred. I'd, I'd get that. I'm, I'm just struggling to understand where six inches can't be picked up from.
Because the six inches is coming out of the overhang, it's coming out of the overhang. The, the building itself is inside all the setbacks, and the second floor is cantilevered, so it's larger than the first floor. So the only thing that's hanging in is just the roof overhangs. You've got about three inches of roof overhang in the rear on the hip roof, and three inches on the left side. So we'd have to redesign the entire top of the house.
You probably have to change the pitch. I'm assuming you have to change the pitch of the-
We'd have, yeah, we'd probably have to change the pitch of the roof altogether.
Yeah.
But the understanding of the setbacks is based off of the, the actual dwelling itself overall, and that's always been the case.
Okay, so right now, yeah, the only thing that we have encroaching, and I have a copy of the plot plan here, is just the, the roof overhang.
Which is part of the dwelling itself.
Yes, part of the house.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the commission? If not, this be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Parker.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
Uh, this, uh, variance does not pass seven two.
Thank you very much.
Your appeal would only be through the circuit court. It doesn't get appealed to city council.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It doesn't get appealed to city council. It only gets appealed through circuit court.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, let's see. The only other tabled item that we, Steve Patton, we had Steve Patton, twenty seventy-five Long Street, waiver of street requirements. Do we have, anyone online? Okay. The planning director report?
Uh, council, council actions in July. They approved the final plat for Phase One B of Haberton Ridge, the replat of Lots seventy-four through seventy-eight of Haberton Ridge, Phase One A, the replats of the railroad addition, Lots Two A and Ten Eleven and Twelve. Uh, they approved the rezoning for the property on Sunset from, from, uh, C two to C five and MF four, the revisions to the pod on Gene George and Dearing Road, the, uh, rezoning on Butterfield Coats from O one and C four to MF twelve. The conditional use for the Adventist tenement lot on two oh six Westwood Street was approved, as was the, uh, conditional use for the church at ten forty-eight South Forty-Eighth Street. They approved a sidewalk waiver for Sunset Ridge, uh, that single family dwelling. The ordinance to establish the entertainment district to be known as the downtown Springdale Outdoor Dining District was approved. That went into effect weekend before last, I think. Uh, they approved a resolution accepting a donation to purchase the duplex located at three oh-
at 307 North Main Street for Shadon Museum. Uh, they approved an annexation of 28.5 acres owned by Jimmy and Margie Bowen on Hilton Road. Uh, authorized the sale of the building at the corner of Meadow and Blair to Art and Nomics LLC. They authorized the execution of interconnection of a, of the municipal water system between Springdale and Tonnitown. They had discussed again the removal of the structure at 215 West Maple Avenue, and they were given some additional time for the work that's already been going on. Um, last night, I discussed with the planning commission, with the city council, a reorganization of the planning department. Uh, what we're looking at is eliminating the secretary position and being allowed to hire a planning technician so that we have someone with a little bit more, uh, planning, uh, experience to move forward. That, uh, position was advertised today. It'll also help us transition as we, some of us get ready to retire, we can transition with some of that. Um, the next work session will be the 15th at 5:30, if that works for everyone.
15th to 22nd?
Yeah. 22nd's council meeting, isn't it? This is a weird, this is a weird month, because today's the first, and it's the first Tuesday. That doesn't usually work that way.
Okay.
Um, we need to talk about, there are some street names in this annex area we got from Bethel Heights that are duplications of street names in Springdale. We need to talk about and recommend to the council some changes to that. Uh, right now, there's only three. Uh, could have been worse, we only have three. The numbers don't have to change, just the street names. We also need to begin the discussion about the transition of the Bethel Heights zoning districts into the Springdale zoning ordinance, and we'll have a recommendation to you on how those zoning transitions can be made. Um, we also need to talk about how we incorporate that new area into our land use plan and our master street plan. Uh, we have some proposed revisions to the Chapter 56 landscaping ordinance we want to discuss with you. Um, a little bit more discussion about the form-based code if we get to it. There's a lot on the agenda, a lot of things to be talked about, and we still need to move forward with the update of the land use plan, so we're kind of having to work through all that, too, so.
Yeah, um, I mean, we definitely need to get through the Bethel Heights piece on that. Will there be a time that we need to have any type of, I mean, I don't know that it's necessarily the entire planning commission, but have an opportunity to go up and just visit with that area?
What we were suggesting, and, and what I'll bring, what we've talked about is, after we go through this and, and we all agree on the transition of how the zones would translate from their zoning districts to ours, that would, we would set a public meeting in Bethel Heights. And, you know, if you all want to be there, that's fine, just to let the Bethel Heights people come in and see how it's going to transition over, with just an open public meeting, and then we will schedule the formal public hearing on the, uh, amendment to the zoning ordinance for a standard planning commission meeting shooting, to have that all ready by the November planning commission meeting. We're still working through the, how we deal with business license. I know we had a, uh, building permit for, in a subdivision that we talked about today. We've talked about business license, and we're, we're transitioning it all through. We got the planning records, we have the plats, large scales, we're beginning to, uh, look through all that, see what we've got, see where we are and all that kind of stuff. It's just taking a little bit of time to get through that. The, uh, council was presented with the revised ward boundary maps last night to incorporate Bethel Heights, keeping in mind, it's only about two square miles. The city has 49 square miles, and we're adding two square miles to it, but the wards need to be established so that they can vote in this upcoming election in November. And so the ward line would be along the railroad track, and it would split Bethel Heights into